Please rise if you can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Bonilla Junior is absent. Councilmember Goldstein?
Present.
Councilmember Roach?
Present.
Councilmember Sarah?
Present.
Councilmember Sermanio?
Present.
Mayor Salinas.
Present. Thank you. We do have a couple of announcements before we get started. Item number four, we're gonna pull, I believe item number four, we're just pulling for comment, correct? Or are we? No, okay, so item number four, we're pulling, and we're also pulling item, item?
Three.
Three from the consent calendar.
For comment, and that one's for comment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, let's see, moving on to closed session announcement. Mr. City Attorney, if you can make our closed session announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is gonna be a brief report on the closed session this evening, as well as the closed session on September 16th. And just referring to the closed session agendas for tonight, there were four items, I'm sorry, three items, the council discussed those items and took no reportable action. On September 16th, there were four items, again, please refer to the closed session agenda that was posted for that meeting, the council discussed all of those items and took no reportable action. With respect to the closed session this evening, Councilmember Bonilla was absent. Otherwise, all council members were present this evening, all council members were present on September the 16th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Our next item is a special presentation this month is National Hispanic Heritage Month, or otherwise known as National Latino Heritage Month, between, I believe it's September 16th, September 15th through October 15th. And so we are here, we're joined here today by our acting director of our library services, Lindsay Vienn is here, let's give Lindsay a big round of applause. We're also joined by the representatives from the Puente Project, Ramiro Ramirez, who's a Puente teacher, Ramiro? Puente's here. And we also have two Puente students, they did not give me the name of the Puente students, but if you can raise your hand. Right? I am a Puente student, and as they all say, once a puentista, always a puentista, absolutely. And then, we also have representatives from the Hayward Promise Neighborhood, we have our director, I see Edgar Chavez is here, Mr. Chavez, a big round of applause. And also Leslie Gonzalez is here, so let's give Leslie a big round of applause. Leslie Gonzalez is the College and Career Program Specialist, she is maiden Hayward, and she represents the Hayward Promise Neighborhood, creating pathways for Hayward students to be on track for college and career success. So, Ms. Gonzalez, thank you very much for being here. Also, we have representatives from La Familia, we have Vidal Gonzalez is here, Vidal. He's the Assistant Director of La Familia, and of course Claudia is here, Claudia, hello, how are ya? She's the Director of Community, I had to look at your title, because every time I see you, you move up, up in La Familia, so. Wanted to, we do have three proclamations, so how about if I pass one over to you? Hold that, and hold that right there, and then, yeah, give one to Councilmember Sermanio, and, see, this one's for the library, hand this over to Councilmember Goldstein. I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll go down and we'll take a picture, and then we'll move on. Okay, proclamation, Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Week was first observed in 1968 and expanded to 1988 to a month-long celebration of the many Latina and Latino cultures that have shaped the North, that shaped the North and South American continents for centuries, including our Spanish colonialization. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated between September 15th and October 15th, when a significant number of Latin countries have Independence Days, such as Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, Chile, and Belize. And whereas the 2025 theme of Hispanic Heritage Month is collective heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future, emphasizing the importance of celebrating the rich cultural traditions that shape Hispanic identity, while looking forward to the creativity and promise of future generations. And whereas many local agencies are committed to supporting the lives and livelihoods of Latina, Latino, Hispanic, Chicano, and other Latinx members of the Hayward community. And whereas the Hayward Public Library is recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month with a series of events, such as a Hispanic Heritage Month scavenger hunt for children at the downtown library, a family lotaria on September 25th, family fun cultural art activities at the Weeks Branch, at the Weeks Branch Library, the annual Day of the Dead Ofrenda or Altar to honor loved ones and ancestors, which will be in the downtown, which will be in the downtown library for three weeks, starting October 7th, and book displays and recommended reading lists focused on Hispanic and Latina, Hispanic and Latinx cultures, histories, and authors at both libraries branches, at both library branches. And whereas the City of Hayward is committed to centering racial equity in our processes and projects to better serve the needs of Latinx, Hispanic, and other marginalized communities through a strategic racial equity action plan. Now, therefore, I, Mark Salinas, Mayor of the City of Hayward, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give this a big round of applause. Yeah, let's all go down there.
There we go. Should I start over, or am I okay? Okay. So as Mayor Salinas so eloquently read from the proclamation, Hayward Public Library is well invested in the community, and through all of its services and programs, we celebrate the Hispanic, Latino, Latinx, Latina community in all of our programming, in all of our resources that the library offers, in celebration of the past, the present, and our future generations. The library is a place of knowledge, and we are here to celebrate with our community partners. We have three of our amazing partners here this evening that wanted to come forth and talk to you a little bit about their programming, and how it supports Hayward Hispanic cultural programming, and also our community. So we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Ramirez from the Puente Program at Tennyson High School.
Do I hold this as I talk, or?
Sure.
Just, okay, alright. First of all, I just want to say thanks for having us, I really appreciate it. As a Hayward made student myself, from kindergarten all throughout to college, I do know how important education is, and I've been lucky enough to be a part of Puente, this is my ninth year teaching Puente, with the different school districts, middle school, high school, all teaching Puente, my colleagues that have been great to work with. I can say that Puente is really nothing without its students, and the kids really make the program what it is, right? We've been really lucky to be able to tell, write, create, and listen to the stories, you know, of our students, of our different nationalities, of our different cultures, and it's been amazing. And so, it's just been a pleasure to work with these kids, as well as to be recognized here, and again, from Tennyson, Hayward High, Mount Eden, and then the different middle schools that are also doing Puente, it's a pleasure. And then I did bring some students that maybe want to share a little bit about what Puente is for them.
Okay. Well, Puente has opened up a lot of opportunities, not only for me, for my classmates, we have gone on like a lot of field trips to different colleges, and these colleges have helped us, you know, see a glimpse of what we want to do when we're older, and what goals we have in our lives for, in the future. And we all just like bond together, and we all come together as a community, and you know, we help with, you know, different things, I mean, like, every year we do like a car show that we all just come together for, and we all contribute in some way. And it's honestly like a really fun program, we all, it's like kinda all, we're just like a big family, and you know, we just all connect with each other, we all have like this strong bond, and we even grow a bond with like our teachers, and just everyone there is honestly just like, you know, genuinely kind of wanting to help with like the community, and you know, just everyone, so, yeah.
Joining Puente has been one of the best choices I've made. So far, the opportunities it gave me has been great, making friends along the way. I've been a Puente student for four years, this is my fourth year, I made a lot of friends along the way, I had good experiences, it's opened a lot of opportunities to me, given me a lot of opportunities. Before I joined Puente, I was always a shy and nervous student, but I've gotten better and more confident with myself, like, before I would be more shy of making speeches like this. But it's helped me get better along the way, they've helped me become stronger, my confidence. I made a lot of connections with others, and built bonds with people who allow me to expand my education, especially with my teachers. Overall, Puente has been an amazing experience, one of the best choices I've made. Thank you.
And just so that you know, not to make you more nervous, but you know, you're on YouTube, Channel 15, and, you know, and you're probably gonna get shared with a lot of other people after the meeting, so.
Congratulations, that was so well said. So our next community partner, it doesn't need much of an introduction, everybody's very aware of Hayward Promise Neighborhoods, we would like to call forward Leslie Gonzalez and our Executive Director Edgar Chavez.
Good evening, everybody, I am very honored to be here, I was a Tennyson Puentista, I was a part of the Hayward Youth Commission, so I know firsthand how important the work that all of these community organizations do, how important it is to really change the lives of our Hispanic community members. In my current role, I oversee the Hayward Promise Internship Program, which encourages CSUEB undergraduate students to gain valuable internship experience through placements in our Hayward Unified Schools, and many of our interns themselves are also Hispanic, Latino identifying, and are alumni of the schools that they support. Some of this work includes, but is not limited to, providing college mentoring to current high school students who plan to pursue higher education, and it really is an honor to be here among all these other organizations, so thank you.
Alright, thank you, Leslie, and we also have Adele Gonzalez, the Assistant Director of La Familia, and also Claudia Del Rio, Director of Community Outreach from La Familia.
No pressure, right? Thank you guys for acknowledging us as being part of this great community, I was also born and raised here in Hayward. Up until middle school, I'm not gonna lie, I went to Oakland, but I consider myself a Bay Area girl, because when I did finish my undergrad at College of Alameda, I did come back to Cal State Hayward, it was still Hayward. So, and I've been here since, I've been working in this community for over like 22 years, I started with Tercio Vasquez, and then I came to La Familia, I just celebrated 12 years at La Familia, so it's been a great joy to see the bicultural, bilingual programming and services that we've expanded, you know, we have our Cultura Bienestar program, that's been around for 15 years within Alameda County, under the MHSA, but of course, we're gonna switch to Prop 1, so we'll see, more to come on that. But we also have a lot of programming with Hayward Promise Neighborhood, we're able to provide to community counselors, and provide therapy to our communities, not just to the kids of the identified school sites, but also to their parents, and do like family counseling, so that's been really great. It does get challenging, we can't buy food and supplies and stuff, so we have to get creative, so, you know, I always tell, I always have this thing, like, never tell a Mexican they can't do something, because it's like, watch me, right? So that's very much my kinda gung ho approach, we do a lot of, I make it a point to make sure that we all work together within my department as a team and programming, so that way we're not in silos, because, you know, we're so much more, and especially within the last, my gosh, 10 years with HPN, and just learning about all the programming and services that we have, and even La Familia, we've expanded so much now, I mean, I always tell people, when I first started, there was like under 40 of us, and now there's close to like 400 of us, right? So, those are just blessings, and it started here in Hayward, so I'm very proud to be a part of Hayward, and also La Familia, and just the organization, and I thank you guys for the great work that you guys do, and just the way you guys show up and represent, you know, Angela showed up, you know, was excited about the K-pop at Schaefer Park, I saw that, oh, K-pop, I gotta go, and I was just like, I saw her, and I was like, okay. But yes, thank you so much, and again, it's been an honor, so, thank you.
And I have to be remiss if I didn't give a plug for the library, so any, if anybody wants any additional information about any of the programming or organizations, the library has an amazing community hub at the downtown library, which is open Monday through Friday for all operating hours, and many of the folks here actually have office hours there, so if you wanna learn more, and far beyond, we have so many more resources offered by community partners, so come see us, thank you.
Councilmember Sermanio.
And thank you all for being here, and especially our youngsters, you are our future, and I'm very proud of you, very happy that you are here. When you go to the library, make sure you see the Cesar Chavez bus that we put up there, we commissioned it, and then also the Hayward and Aranda Sister City collection, that's very, very good. Puente teacher, marvelous, thank you all for teaching our kids, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, let's give Puente and everyone a big round of applause, HPN, La Familia. And as they're working their way back to their seat, I just wanted to, you know, as they were talking, I was dotting a few things here, you know, historically, a lot of folks may not know this, but historically Hayward, students, I should say, in Hayward, whether they were at Chebaut or at Cal State Hayward at the time, were founders, they were the pioneers, and they were the founders of some of the biggest institutions that we have here in Hayward, serving immigrants, serving Latinos, serving multicultural, multiethnic, multilingual constituencies, and let me just read you a few. You know, back in the 60s, I'd be remiss if it did not start off with, Tercio Vasquez started in Hayward, this was the first attempt to connect high-quality healthcare, a new revolutionary model of community-based healthcare services connecting to immigrants. It started here in Hayward, the model started here in Hayward, and which was, and it was started by, there were public health students who did it. La Familia, I mean, La Familia, again, started in the 1960s, early, I believe, early 1960s, but the goal was to connect immigrants in Hayward to high-quality mental health and psychosocial services that they would not, that they would have otherwise been unable to afford. And the founders of La Familia were graduate students in counseling and in public health, both at Berkeley and at Cal State Hayward at the time. The Eden Housing was founded in Hayward by a professor up at Cal State East Bay, who saw a need to connect seniors, families, and low-income families, multiethnic, multilingual, multicultural families, to high-quality housing. And then, of course, I'd be, you know, especially remiss if I did not say that the Puente Project was founded right here in Hayward, at Chebaut College, and my sister was the first Puente class at Chebaut College, and I was the fourth Chebaut College, fourth Puente class at Chebaut College. And it was Puente that literally had introduced to me the first novel written by a Latino, written by a Mexican-American, and who, you know, is arguably the godfather of New Mexico literature, which is Rulofo Anaya, and Bless Me Ultima was the book that we all read as our introductory book at Chebaut College. So, you know, I am so proud to be part of this city, and this city has led the way in many, on many fronts, but I'm always proud to say that a lot of the movements that moved this city started in a schoolhouse, and so, or in a college, or at a university. And so when we talk about what defines an education city, those are the ideas, those are the innovations, and those are the products that come out of the ideas of these just incredible innovative students, from kindergarten to graduate school, so congratulations, and thank you, and thank you Puente for representing. Once a puentista? Always a puentista, alright. Okay, well, thank you, and congratulations again, and thank you for coming out. Okay. Moving on to public comments, I do have a couple of public commenters, and I believe first, let me, let me go to my cards before I come up here. Our first public commenter is here in the chamber, his name is Alex, and Alex, please forgive me for not being able to say your last name, I'm sure you're gonna say it up here, so coming up in... And make sure, yeah, there you go.
My last name is Tipayatchan, which is from Thailand, our food's very popular, but our people have to exist more, so it's okay. So I just want to say, you know, good evening, Mayor, as well as council members, my name is Alexander Tipayatchan, and I am the Youth Outreach Director for One Step Community Resources and Inclusion. A local nonprofit is based here in the Bay Area, I'm actually a Hayward resident myself. Our mission is to keep students and faculty safe through free workshops, emergency protocols, and student empowerment programs. We all know that school shootings and bullying are no longer rare, unfortunately, this and problems, they are happening here and across our nation every single year. In 2025 alone, there have been over 187 victims hurt or killed in school shootings. Schools urgently need preparedness protocols and support systems, which we offer at our nonprofit. That's where our nonprofit steps in, we provide free training for faculty on how to respond in case of an active shooter, and how to follow mandated reporting for bullying and threats. These protocols are critical for saving lives, and they cost schools nothing at all. But just as important as the role of the students themselves, research shows that students are 57% more effective in stopping bullying when they simply speak up or stand with a peer, than both parents as well as teachers combined. To support this, we help students start their own anti-bullying, as well as anti-violence clubs, we also work with schools to build protocols for existing student groups, so they can have real tools, resources, and adult allies to support them. This is not just about stopping or fighting or preventing harassment, it's about building a culture of courage, inclusion, and safety, where students protect each other's faculty, know exactly where to step in, and take an emergency action. Today, I'm asking the City of Hayward to support our work by allowing us to bring these free presentations and trains into local schools, both for students and faculty. Together, we can take meaningful action before another unfortunate tragedy starts. There has already been one in Berkeley, California, with Berkeley High School. I know unfortunately that these school shootings are very existent even in the Bay Area, so again, you know, if I had been able to talk to the school district and increase awareness for this issue, these presentations are all free, I would love to do that, so thank you so much for your time, and I welcome the opportunity to meet with your staff to discuss your next steps, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, and I have received your email, and I have forwarded it to the school district, and so, but thank you for your work on this, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Our next public speaker is John Boy. John Boy, online? Going once? Going twice, John Boy hung up, okay. I will move back here to the chamber, Councilmember Andrews has a public comment.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to thank staff for working tirelessly on the budget. Moving forward, I would like to implement a fiscal response team to be created immediately to support staff in their efforts as we continue moving forward. Although we have implemented a hiring freeze, which I would like the council to revisit as an agenda item, I want to reiterate, we are continuing to deliver services to the community, including emergency response, fixing our roads, delivering of utilities, and other essential services. We are also obligated to move forward on some items, or some items we will have to put on hold, but these items we are continuing to look at as we are reviewing our revenues and expenses. However, as a council, we need to dig deeper, I want to thank the Budget and Finance Committee, but at this point in time, we are all, each and every one of us, on that Budget and Finance Committee, therefore, I... Therefore, I want to see the budget as a standing item on the agenda every week moving forward and for us to be more discerning with our initiatives and to revisit the strategic roadmap to confirm what is essential, including reduction of items that impact the general fund that are deemed nonessential. We all have good intentions, but I will be reducing my request for items, including reducing demands on staff for events, public art, catalysts for economic development, and other initiatives. I want to thank staff to continuing to have the HARP program, even if it is restructured. I will also take this opportunity to lean on our county, state, and federal elected officials to help support these efforts as they reduce the impact to the general fund, but help with social safety nets and foster community engagement. I am also asking for support from our business community and nonprofits. As we see this type of support in other communities, we need the support here in Hayward. Thank you to the community for your feedback. I got plenty of it. And we will continue to work to ensure we are providing services and serving the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alejandro Hasso.
Hi. Can you hear me good?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Hi. Yeah, I'm just calling because last week, we had a great celebration of the grand reopening of Tennyson Park. Now Hayward is a bike destination. We have a brand-new pump track. There were like a lot of kids, adults riding their bikes around the pump track. So I think that's also something that makes the bike lanes that are planned for Rose Road really important. So just want to highlight that. You know, now we have a bike destination in Hayward of the Tennyson Park. And you know, it's important that, you know, we have as many safe routes as possible as we can. And I know there's also some constant items regarding bike lanes in downtown. So I just want to, you know, I know this is like great that the city is moving forward with some of these projects that are going to make biking safer in downtown. So really excited about this project. So yeah, thank you so much for the work.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. And I don't have any more public comments online. And I don't have any more public comment cards for the chamber. So I will close public comment and I will move on to city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Salinas and council members. Tonight, I would like to use the space to spotlight some of our recent successes as well as one upcoming event. So the really good news is the California Department of Housing and Community Development has designated Hayward as a pro-housing jurisdiction. According to HCD, pro-housing jurisdictions go above and beyond in enacting bold and locally-driven policies that accelerate housing production, lower costs, and expand opportunity. Hayward was specifically recognized for allowing residential development in all commercial zoning districts and it's 46.7 million invested in affordable housing since 2018. This designation makes Hayward eligible for funding from the Pro-Housing Incentive Program, PIP, which provides funding to pro-housing jurisdictions to support the construction and preservation of affordable housing. Hayward will also receive bonus points and priority status for other state housing, infrastructure, and planning grant and incentive programs. So congratulations to staff on that. I'm also proud to share that Hayward has been recognized with top international honors by the International Economic Development Council, the world's largest professional association for economic development with more than 4,500 members worldwide. This year, Hayward earned a Gold Award of Excellence in Digital Media for our innovative hashtag Hayward program, which combines storefront improvements with social media influencer campaigns to boost small businesses. These grants and partnerships have generated millions of social media views for our local businesses. And I just want to say Hayward's really making its mark in social media. The city also received a Silver Award for Excellence in Post-Secondary Education for our signature education city programs, Learn to Earn and Hire Hayward. In partnership with Cal State East Bay and Chabot College, these initiatives provide tuition assistance and direct job connections in advanced industries, helping hundreds of residents upscale while supporting the workforce needs of local employers. These are extraordinary recognitions, given that IEDC received more than 450 submissions this year. Since 2021, Hayward has earned a total of eight IEDC awards, underscoring our consistent leadership and innovation in supporting businesses and residents alike. So have a couple more. And again, congratulations to our economic development team. For those of you who were there, this wasn't a surprise. Our Hayward Executive Open House drew record crowds this last weekend. An all-time record crowd of 14,400 aviation enthusiasts from Hayward and across the East Bay attended the Hayward Executive Airport Open House on Sunday, September 21st. The family-friendly event showcased the airport's 534-acre property and featured food, music, static aircraft, and classic air displays, as well as equipment used by Hayward's police, fire, and maintenance services departments. And if you were there, that was a huge display from the city. In total, there were more than 50 vendors and exhibitors in attendance. Home to more than 350 aircraft and 21 aviation support businesses, the Hayward Executive Airport is a regional hub for general aviation and a major asset to the city and Bay Area as a whole. The open house was a chance for residents to see airport operations up close, and it is encouraging to see a record crowd learning about how valuable a resource the airport is to our community. In addition, a lot of people took little, took the flights in the little airplanes, and I know that they were sold out very early. And coming up soon, and I hope to see all of you there, the inaugural Taste of Hayward event. This food festival will take place in downtown Hayward Thursday, October 9th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Hosted by the Downtown Hayward Improvement Association, Hayward Chamber of Commerce, the event will feature food and beverage samples from both mainstays and up-and-comers of Hayward's culinary scene, as well as live music. Tickets are $38.50, which is a really reasonable sum for what you're going to get, including a service fee and provides access to all appetizers, entrees, drinks, and desserts available. To register, you can visit the DHIA website at downtownhayward.com. See you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, our economic development director is here. Our economic development officer is here, Paul Nguyen. So let's give Paul a good big round of applause. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Your team is absolutely incredible. You guys are killing it out there. So thank you very much for everything. And please, big props to your staff. So thank you. Councilmember Andrews.
I also want to give them a shout out because they had the Startup World Cup and give a shout out to Cal State East Bay. So we have folks from all over the country presenting their pitch ideas for their, all their different inventions and all that. So it was really good luck for Hayward.
If I may add, I hope that you all did a wonderful skip that day and you were a real hit, Councilmember Andrews and Councilmember Roach.
Okay. Okay. So next, moving on to our consent, our action items, our consent calendar. We are going to, we're gonna pull three. Mayor Pro-Tam Roach has a comment on item number three. And then we're also gonna pull item four. And we're pulling item four for review and we'll come back, we'll come back to council on that later. Okay. Okay. So councilmember, Mayor Pro-Tam Roach, item number three. Go ahead.
Thank you. I, so I'm pulling item three because it has a general fund allocation in it. All the other, all the other consent items this week either do not have one or we're pulling one for further clarification. And I'm doing that because, you know, I made a promise two weeks ago that we're going to be looking at everything. Everything is on the table as we deal with this budget crisis. And so that includes any allocation from the general fund. And I, you know, I will admit it, ask our chief to come up and speak to it. But, you know, I know how hard our leadership is working on our budget crisis. And I want to thank our leadership and the staff for the work that they're doing. But while we're doing it, we don't really have a clear vision yet. I don't have a clear vision yet of how we work out, we get through this because it's a pretty significant budget crisis, as everybody has heard. And in order to do that, it seems like everything has to be questioned. And that includes any item that comes for us, even our fire department, who I know are working really hard in the community. And this item has to do with, you know, I think succession planning and bringing in new recruits. But I am, I am going to ask the chief to come up here. And I want to thank Councilmember Andrews for her comments because, you know, I think our job here is to be a dead stop on things while we figure out how we're going to move forward with this significant deficit. And so I don't know how to agree to anything right now without sort of further explanation because we're just adding to the, we're adding to the deficit while we make new allocations. And so, so my question on this, on this item is, I think it's a $300,000 transfer from the general fund to the CIP for this. That was what the staff report said. That, and while I understand it was in the budget, it was contemplated in the budget, the problem is the budget was based on false information, as far as I can tell, and that we can't afford the budget. And so, so I'm asking you to, you know, let me know, you know, what your explanation is there. And I know it talks about sort of being able to recruit and all that. But my understanding is the fire department is actually fully staffed. And so can you please answer to the recruitment crisis while it's fully staffed? And what the importance of this is? And is, how urgent is it? Is this something that can be delayed while we work out the budget crisis?
So a few years back, we were starting to find that the number of recruits that applied to the Hayward Fire Department annually was dropping. And our requirement, entry-level requirement is to have a paramedic license. So as the numbers were dropping, we started asking our fellow fire departments throughout the area, throughout the county, and actually throughout the state, the number of paramedics had dropped. I think part of that had to do with COVID and people not going to paramedic school during COVID. And so anyway, we found ourselves in a position where we were not getting a high number of recruits. And those who we were getting may have had paramedic license, but were not necessarily passing our entry-level exam. So brainstorming was done and the question was asked, you know, should we try to do an entry-level exam with EMTs and paramedics? With discussion with the local, since it is a requirement and it is listed in our MOU, the entry level will be paramedic license certified. A side letter was entered into for a one-time appointment or allowance for us to test and allow us to hire EMTs and paramedics, with the understanding that there, if we did hire EMTs, their job would be required. They would do a year probation for the firefighter portion of it, and then they would have an additional year after that to complete their paramedic license as a requirement for them staying employed with the Hayward Fire Department. So we did that. We currently have 18 EMTs who are working with us, who have been hired, are in different stages of the probationary process. And 11 of them right now are registered to begin paramedic school at UC Davis program. That is where the first group is coming in. And then there's going to be a second group the following year that we have eight more EMTs who will be going through that program. So that's, that's where we are. We are fully staffed. We have four positions that right now are frozen till the end of the year. That, and then at that point, we're going to reevaluate and see where we are, how many positions we've lost due to retirement, that kind of stuff. And we'll evaluate whether or not we're going to ask to put on an academy of recruitment and an academy in '26. So the reason that we are fully staffed, but we still need this, is because we're fully staffed, but we have 18 recruits who, not recruits, but probationary firefighters who have EMT licenses and are, per the agreement that we made, going to be having to go to paramedic school.
And so, so right, they're due to start at UC Davis. So if you don't get this allocation, then they don't get paid for at UC Davis. Is that right?
We've, yeah, they will not get full payment for, for the program.
And so that, I mean, that was my question. So like the urgency of it, does it need to be, does it need to happen now? And is this a new request? Was this something that was in the budget? It was in the budget?
It was. $70,000 was requested in the Fund 405 or CIP budget. And then since we were not putting on an academy this year, we were going to use, we're planning on using the budgeted money for academy to send them, to use that to go towards the program.
And is that, I mean, is it $300,000? Because you're saying 70, because the request in the staff report was $300,000.
It's going to be $140,000 total for this first 11 going through right now. And then it'll be a little bit less, since we only have eight versus the 11 that are going through now. But if you, if you were to double it, it's roughly, if you double the $140,000, it's roughly $300. It'll be a little bit less.
And maybe I can just ask staff too, like from your perspective, like is this urgent? I mean, I'm trying to, you know, trying to, I know, I know this is not a lot of money. Like it's not that. It's just that the only way we're coping this is...
No, we understand that there, that you guys are putting additional scrutiny on things, and I think that's fair. So in this case, we did look at this from a fiscal impact. So these recruits, per the agreement, need to, not recruit, they're employees, need to finish this within 24 months. And so they need to start it now. We can't wait any longer. They've, we've already put it off somewhat. And in addition, it is legally required for the city to pay, we did look into this, for the city to pay for this training because it is a requirement.
For both, both teams?
For the paramedics. Sorry, to become paramedics because it is a requirement for them to keep their job.
Okay.
So that is labor law. And so, yeah, we did explore it. We, great partners in the fire department to see if there were any other options. But this is at this moment, and it was, it was in the, in the CIP budget. But we do understand that you need to look at everything.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, I appreciate you taking my questions on that. Thanks.
Quick follow-up, and not with you, chief. Quick follow-up with staff. Can we, is there a way that we can assess, and it doesn't have to be done tonight or, you know, tomorrow, but in, you know, soon, is there a way to assess all of the future expected expenditures that are, that we are contractually obligated?
Sure. I think we, yeah, we can undertake that analysis. And I think the other thing that is happening in real, in this moment is that we're looking at, so Fund 405 is the CIP part of the general fund, although there are some other funding sources in there, grant funding. We're looking at that and seeing what projects we do. You know, this was a legally required one, but that we might be able to postpone. I think, you know, Director Ameri's team is looking at that. So we'll be bringing that for your consideration. And some of those projects are being held until we can have that conversation.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank the chief for coming up and answering my questions on that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, well, or a consent item, yes. Or any consent item.
Oh, sure. Okay. Can I have a question answered on item number four regarding the EV charging stations?
Well, we're pulling that one. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So see and no other questions. I will move for public comment to see if there's any public comment. I don't see anybody online. I don't have any cards up here with me. So I will then come back up to the dais and see if, entertain a motion. And the motion would be to move all the items with the exception of item number four.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Goldstein. Second by Councilmember Roach. And if there are no objections, Madam City Clerk, it will unanimously pass. Thank you. Our next item is item number 10. And, no, I'm sorry, item number 11, which is a work session. And this is our Business Friendly Hayward Project Update, Review of Summary of Best Practices Report, Analyses of Hayward Codes and Practices, Downtown Commercial Analyses, and Outreach, and Outreach Summary. And I believe the person who will kick this off will be our Development Services Director, Sarah Bowser. And she has her team of very capable planners coming up to the dais.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, council members. I am going to...
I am going to be up here very briefly, and then I want to turn it over to my esteemed colleagues from the Planning Division that are very happy to be here to present this item, talking about the project that we're working on related to making Hayward and our regulations a little more business-friendly. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth Lanton and Sachi Riddico.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Elizabeth Lanton, Senior Planner. Tonight, Assistant Planner Sachi Riddle and I will bring you a new project that we've been working on with the Economic Development Team over the past several months. Some of you saw this at CDC several months ago, but for some of you, this will be the first time that you're seeing this. Called Business Friendly Hayward, this project aims to take a close look at the city's rules and regulations regarding commercial development, to see where we can remove barriers and the proverbial red tape to make it easier for businesses to open and to thrive in Hayward. Tonight's work session is really just meant to bring you up to speed with what we've been doing over the past several months, and to get your guidance and feedback before we really dive into the municipal code and start making changes or drafting changes. With that, I'll hand it over to Sachi to kick us off.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So by looking at the city's strategic roadmap, several downtown-specific plan programs, and a few new state laws, we've come up with two main project objectives. The first is to streamline permitting for businesses across our commercial and mixed-use zoning districts. So if there are businesses that decision-makers or community members want to see more of in the city of Hayward, we want to make sure our codes and permitting processes aren't overly cumbersome in preventing these businesses from opening. Second, we aim to activate vacant and underutilized properties and storefronts downtown. There are some properties downtown that have been empty for a while, and in many ways, this is out of our control, and maybe due to factors like the current market or challenges around the fault line. But as a part of this effort, we want to explore things we can control to see if there are new strategies, code changes, or process updates that we can employ to temporarily or permanently inject energy and vitality into our downtown. Spring and summer of this year, we were really focused on research and analysis and outreach and feedback, and now we're shifting our focus more towards updating regulations with the aim of project completion in early 2026. To begin our outreach, staff visited council economic development committee, as Elizabeth mentioned. Here, we did a project kickoff and introduced the project and explained our goals. We've launched a survey, launched a webpage with more information about the project, including public hearing dates, and a survey for community members and business owners. When asked about how they would rate their overall experience with permitting, licensing, and scheduling inspections with the city of Hayward, business owners gave Hayward a 3.34 star rating. The length of approval times and information either being unclear or inaccessible were amongst the biggest challenges that business owners face. For community members, even though 48% of respondents said that they shop in Hayward weekly, Hayward only received a 2.61 star satisfaction rating with the current variety of businesses available. The most desired uses are retail, restaurants, and live entertainment. In written responses, respondents mentioned Castro Valley, Pleasanton, and Dublin as having their favorite downtown and commercial areas, naming a feeling of safety and a lack of vacant storefronts as reasons why they would visit. The project webpage has an interactive survey data dashboard that you can find. It was made by our summer intern, Finn Smith, and you can find all this information there and more. We've also gone to summer street parties to interact with the public. Community members who attend summer street parties would like to see more recreation and special event uses in the city of Hayward. Young families also expressed a strong desire for breweries and cafes with kids' play places, uses that are generally visited by adults but have a more casual atmosphere, where kids and pets are welcome. People were also very vocal about their desire for a wider variety of restaurants and coffee shops in the city of Hayward. Staff was also able to meet with the Downtown Hayward Improvement Association to introduce the project. The DHIA expressed a strong desire to add teeth to the vacant property ordinance, to sincerely encourage property owners to look for tenants for their vacant properties, and also asked what Hayward was going to do with their own vacant properties downtown. The DHIA expressed a strong desire to work with the city on this project and have continued involvement and support from the city going forward. Staff is considering ways to keep the community involved even after the municipal code has been updated through this project. And a few ideas that we've considered are a social media campaign highlighting different businesses in the city of Hayward, a quarterly meeting with business owners and a representative from the police department, and biannual visits from Economic Development and Planning to the Chamber of Commerce to introduce new projects, and then address any concerns or answer any questions that chamber members may have. Through our DHIA meeting, we were connected with the chamber, and we've begun working on setting up focus groups with chamber members to be able to get more specific feedback about the project. Finally, we were able to meet with the Planning Commission last month to have a workshop with them and get some initial thoughts and feedback on the project, which Elizabeth will be going over later in the presentation. So for our research and analysis, we partnered with planning firm Rincon Consultants and retail experts Metrovation. Together, they were able to find examples of these five programs in other cities around California, and found that incorporating them could really help activate and enliven our commercial areas. Cities like Fremont and Union City have simplified their zoning and made it more flexible to allow diverse uses to more easily locate to their downtown areas. Active-use overlays look to encourage vibrant and inviting community feel by requiring active uses along the ground floor and downtown corridors. This would look like encouraging restaurants and retail, and maybe requiring use permits for more personal service uses like massage. The city of Hayward has strict regulations around cabaret, which look to regulate more intense uses like nightclubs, but tend to discourage live entertainment as a whole. So by looking at examples from Sacramento and Morgan Hill, we hope to create a live entertainment permit that helps facilitate more live music and activities downtown on a smaller scale or at already established businesses. San Francisco recently launched their Vacant to Vibrant Program, and this is looking to enliven vacant spaces with pop-up uses like restaurants and retail. Hayward hopes to take a page out of their book, not only to help bring vibrancy to our downtown, but to help new businesses really gain customers and traction in the city of Hayward. And finally, during COVID, restaurants were able to be creative with their outdoor seating options to help their businesses survive, and customers really loved these little parklets that were created. This led to jurisdictions like Amoryville and Pleasanton to create formal parklet programs to keep these unique outdoor spaces. And downtown Hayward would really benefit from this kind of activation. So these best practices have given us some strategies to help create thriving and vibrant commercial areas. And the commercial analysis, which Elizabeth will be going over next, gives us a map of where and how to apply these practices.
Thank you, Sachi.
So one of our project consultants, Metrovation, who are economic experts that specialize in retail specifically, conducted a commercial analysis of downtown Hayward, which was included as part of Attachment III to the staff report. Now, I won't have time to walk through all the findings of this report, but I want to bring a few highlights to your attention. The commercial analysis starts with a look at downtown strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, which are shown in the top table here. For strengths, Metrovation found that downtown is located in a great, accessible, central location. It offers free parking, and its historic grid provides good bones for a walkable environment. Now, on the flip side, our weaknesses include the poor one-way traffic circulation, which is unaffectionately known as the loop, and the number of vacant and poorly maintained properties. Opportunities for improvement include, obviously, fixing the traffic circulation issue, which I'll mention the Transportation Division is currently working on as part of their Safe Streets project, and attracting live music, activities, and businesses that are really focused on creating experiences that draw more people downtown. And then finally, the potential threats to our downtown include the uncertain future of our movie theater and the cost of making any improvements, especially given the current budget situation that we're in. Now, Metrovation also conducted a demographic analysis, which found that we have three major demographic groups living within a mile of our downtown. Living most centrally in our downtown core are diversely-aged, single people earning kind of mid-scale incomes, who want to live an active city lifestyle. So in particular, this group likes dining out. They like nightlife and entertainment. They like fitness, wellness-type establishments, personal services like nail shops and salons, and then just places where they can quickly pick up daily essentials. Slightly farther out, but still within that one-mile radius of our downtown core, we find more families, kind of at a mix of income levels. Now, our families enjoy many of the same types of retail that our singles do, but we start to see more of a desire for family entertainment, more family-style dining, some more fast casual options, grocery stores, specialty retail, and then some home and garden businesses. Okay, so Sachi and I just threw a ton of information at you about what types of businesses our community wants, about what other cities are doing to support their commercial areas, and about what our downtown market can support. So what do we do with all of this? How can we use this information to better attract and support businesses in Hayward? For that, we turn to the remainder of Attachment III, which is an analysis of Hayward's codes and practices. After combing through the various sections of our municipal code that regulate commercial businesses, we identified several potential areas for improvement, three of which I'm going to highlight here. First, like many cities, we require use permits to operate some types of businesses. Now, administrative use permits typically take at least three months to process, and they require an initial deposit of $2,000. Conditional use permits can take up to six months or even longer to process, and they require an initial deposit of $6,000. For many businesses, and especially for small businesses just starting out, these permitting costs and timeframes can be deal breakers and can result in Hayward losing these businesses to other nearby communities that might have comparatively easier permitting processes. So while use permits are a good tool for cities to helping control the type of development that occurs in different places, we want to make sure that we're not overusing this tool and inadvertently blocking desirable types of businesses from opening up shop here. Secondly, our definitions of business types and categories have not kept up with the times, and they can be confusing to interpret, particularly for new uses or emerging sectors. It can be hard to figure out where they fit in, where they're allowed to operate, if anywhere. And then finally, we just have a lot of commercial zoning districts. We have nine base commercial zoning districts and nine mixed-use districts, and this can make it really hard for new businesses, and frankly, sometimes for staff, to understand where different businesses are allowed to operate in the city. So as a result, we have the following recommendations for ways that the city could revise our code to be more business-friendly, and this is really where we want your feedback this evening. So we're going to ask you, which of these feel appropriate for Hayward, or which of these don't feel appropriate for Hayward? First recommendation, we should create a faster and cheaper permitting process for the types of uses that could really help activate our commercial areas, things like pop-up uses and live entertainment activities, as these are the things that are going to draw people to us. Secondly, we should reduce permitting requirements for popular types of businesses, such as establishments that sell or serve beer and wine, for custom manufacturing uses, things where people can create textiles, pottery, or other small goods, not like big industrial manufacturing, but smaller things. And then small health clubs, these are really popular with people. For some of these uses, it might mean reducing the requirement from a conditional use permit to an administrative use permit. For others, it could mean eliminating the need for a use permit altogether and maybe allowing these things by right. To go even further, we might want to consider establishing entertainment zones in specific areas, maybe along pockets of B Street, where special rules pertaining to alcoholic beverages could be allowed during certain hours or during certain events to encourage people to hop to different businesses during events, for example. Another new idea that many communities around the country are starting to explore is to allow accessory commercial units, or ACUs. As shown in the bottom photo here, ACUs are kind of like ADUs, except instead of creating an additional housing unit on a residential property, they allow property owners to open small storefronts that are connected to their homes. So in Hayward, this could allow for the incubation of small or emerging businesses, especially in areas that are already kind of mixed-use anyway, like in our downtown area or in the area that's kind of surrounding Mission Boulevard. And then finally, it's recommended that we consider eliminating some of our smaller commercial zoning district just by consolidating them into larger districts, so we have fewer commercial categories to begin with. So with that, we're going to turn it over to the council for discussion. And again, at this juncture in the project, we just want to know if there's any of these recommendations really that you don't feel are appropriate for Hayward. So again, like making beer and wine sales more permissible, does that feel appropriate? Allowing small-scale entertainment activities with a faster and cheaper permit, does that feel appropriate? Identifying specified entertainment zones, allowing accessory commercial units, or anything else we went over. Are there any of these things that feel like it wouldn't align with where we want Hayward to go? And then secondly, are there any additional types of businesses that we didn't talk about in this presentation, where you're like, hey, this is something that I really think we should also focus on streamlining? I'll note here, we brought this same presentation essentially to the Planning Commission last month. They expressed their support for the variety of recommendations that we brought about with two ideas that they were hesitant about. The two things that they expressed some reserve about were, first, they were worried that we might want to hold off on accessory commercial units, for now at least. They said that we might want to wait until we get a, we're better able to regulate street vendors in the city. They thought there might be some concerns about the ability of like code enforcement to manage both programs if there were people that were starting businesses and not following the permitting process. So that was a concern they brought up. Secondly, they expressed concern about further promotion of parklets as an activation strategy, just for the simple reason that a parklet, unlike outdoor dining, is in the public right-of-way, so it potentially takes up a parking space on the street. So they were just concerned about that trade-off as something that they brought up. Other than that, they were generally supportive of the recommendations. In addition to Sachi and myself, Paul Wynn, as we noted earlier tonight, is here to assist in answering any questions that the council might have. And we also have our consultant, Metrovation, which, again, are retail experts, that can also assist in answering any questions. And with that, we'll stop talking, and we look forward to your feedback.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. It is a work session, so what I want to do is I want to open up for public comment. I don't have any cards for anyone here in the chambers, but I do have a couple of online. I'd like to call upon Teresa Resendez.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So a couple of points I wanted to make, and thank you for your time this evening. First of all, I am with Hayward Concerned Citizens, and also representing myself. First of all, open carry in Hayward, I'm very much against. I think that the risk of people getting into fights or, you know, having open carry with children around is really not attractive to, attracting families to downtown Hayward. I'm absolutely against massage parlors, or even, like, I know we have a, like, adult store downtown with sex toys and things like that. I'm really against that as well. And as I've expressed in the past, I'm against stores like Cookies, which is a marijuana shop, being open downtown. You know, the city council really needs to lead by example, and I'm strongly encouraging you to advocate for a downtown Hayward that is more moral. I also want data-driven decisions, like is the revenue in tax money coming from Cookies and other marijuana shops actually bringing in revenue enough to justify it? Or if it's very little revenue, then they should be closed down at the first possible opportunity, and then maybe form another task force to look at the type of businesses that would bring families to downtown Hayward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Suzanne on iPhone.
Hi. I'm Suzanne Luther with Hayward Concerned Citizens. I have two comments to make in regards to this. One, about trying to bring more businesses and people to the downtown area. How are you going to do that when you're not addressing the homeless situation and the people that are on drugs and the people that scream and yell and loiter and all of that? I mean, there was a situation that I read on Nextdoor where a lady was walking down the street and a woman tried to grab her child and chased her two blocks into a store and stood out there for an extended amount of time. The lady said she was in that store for over an hour before the lady left. She was, you know, in fear for her life and her child. So that's something that you guys really need to address. And also, you need to support your current businesses. It's been about, it was about a month ago that a business owner was in there saying he's a restaurant and he has an illegal food vendor that camps out right across the street from his business. They're very aggressive to him and his employees, and he has been complaining about this situation, he said, for years. I think he said 10 years, but I don't know that there was a food vendor there for 10 years, that he's written letters, he's emailed, he's spoken to council members and the city, and nothing's been done. And this poor guy came to the meeting a month ago and said, that's it, I'm throwing up my hands and I'm closing my business. He's a well-established business, he's been there for years. You guys need to support your current businesses. He's not far from downtown. So just a couple of concerns that I think you all need to really consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is TJ from Hayward Concerned Citizens.
Hi. Yeah, I just, I wanted to chime in and back my colleagues. I agree with a lot of what they said, and I just wanted to add that, you know, the other concern that's come up that still hasn't fully been addressed is Regis Village and how that's going to impact the downtown. I went to the meeting at the library, the town hall that discussed it. I know the people there did not get ample opportunity at all to share their concerns, but I know there was one thing that came up from the Chamber of Commerce, that there was someone who had been at Regis Village who ended up in the downtown and caused a problem there. So I do think those are things that have to be looked at if you want to make it a business-friendly, family-friendly place. We all support that. I think your street party events, those have been fantastic, and have brought in so many people and seem to be very well organized, but I do think the day-to-day needs to really be addressed and looked at. I know our heart staff is limited in their hours, our police staff are limited in what they can enforce, and so I don't know the answer, but I think, I don't want to put the cart before the horse and say, let's, you know, bring all this new stuff in the downtown and still have people, you know, hanging out that are acting up. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any more speakers online, so I will close public comment and return to the dais. And our first speaker is Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you for the report, and thank you for also going to the Planning Commission to discuss this item. So I have a couple of questions. I want to know what this study did that was different from what economic development has done in the past, and what the community members and council members have been communicating over the last, I don't know, 10 years?
What the retail analysis did, you mean? Paul, I don't know if you want to speak to this. This addition to the scope of work was something that economic development specifically wanted to add in.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Paul Nguyen, Chief Economic Development Officer, happy to be here tonight. So this study is a little different than the initiatives we've done over the last, say, 10 years as I've been with the city. It goes into a lot more independent detail, especially on the demographic side. That attachment is a deep dive into the customer marketplace that really defines how businesses decide to locate in Hayward. So it's a kind of an independent analysis from a team that specializes in retail leasing, which my team doesn't necessarily, we aren't experts and we aren't privy to a lot of the decisions that prospective tenants, you know, as they're dealing with brokers, we only get, half the time, we get caught when they're kind of like on the one-yard line to decide whether they want to come to Hayward. We brought in these consultants because they are on the front lines, doing the marketing, doing leasing in these deals in other cities in these comparative communities. So it provides a realistic snapshot of the pros and cons, you know, the strengths and weaknesses, and I think that report really does a deep dive identifying the universe of variables that define our abilities, economic development staff's ability to attract businesses downtown. So, you know, that slide with the strengths and weaknesses, when it talks about the loop, it talks about parking, downtown circulation, you know, public safety, some of the comments that you heard tonight. So it really gives an independent look from an outsider who specializes in selecting and locating the tenants that we're looking for.
Okay. And then this could be a question for you or for the presenters, but the biggest complaints, I don't hear about the zoning. I hear more about coordination between the different divisions and departments, and how long it takes to respond to them, how they're getting conflicting information, which costs more money to respond, when they have to redesign, resubmit. And wanted to know, what are we doing to address that issue? Because this presentation was more about zoning, but what deters businesses is that communication and coordination.
Yeah. Some of, zoning does address some of that, because if you eliminate a process altogether, then they're not having to do so much internal coordination to begin with. Some of the processes that we are looking to address in this project will be revisions to the Muni code. Some will also be internal processes, though, to improve our coordination among our different divisions. In Development Services, we work with pretty much every department in the city who does review of these projects, and it's an ongoing effort to make sure that we are speaking as one voice and not giving conflicting information, as I'm sure Director Bowser will...
Before Director Bowser comes up, I do want to qualify that I know that some of the submitters don't have their stuff together all the time, and they have to go back and redesign, resubmit, because they didn't come to you all in the first place. So just want to make sure that at the beginning that they have the information, I'm sure they do, but I just want to make sure that we are not that cause. So is there, I know you can't recommend any designers for them to go to, because that would be a conflict, but what is something that we can do to help those businesses have a smoother process?
We do a number of things. So, you know, thanks to Ms. Planton's wonderful leadership in planning, we've actually put together bi-weekly meetings with all of the department reviewers, and we talk about all hot sort of projects, the projects that are going through the process, and we talk internally to figure out where they're at in the process, to keep things moving for applicants. We are meeting as key departments in the reviewing process, both Development Services, or I should say Development Services, Fire, and Public Works are all planning on meeting actually later this week to continue conversations about how best to streamline permitting process and make sure that we're all on the same page. Frankly, there's resource challenges in some of these departments, which does add time, and then I think, as you mentioned, not every project comes in looking amazing, and so there can be a lot of back and forth. But we're also looking at that. So if we're looking at projects that have gone back and forth maybe too many times, looking for ways we can proactively set up meetings with them, with their design professionals, with the reps from the various city reviewer, reviewing departments, just to kind of then meet and do that extra hand-holding. So there's a number of things that we are exploring to sort of help in those situations. But I think the, this particular process is really going to look at the permitting part of it, and how do we make that easy for certain uses? But then procedural-wise, we're internally looking at things that we can do to sort of get at some of those challenges that have been raised.
Okay. And then how, what's our measure for success? Are we comparing ourselves to other jurisdictions of how fast we can get permits out? Or how do we know these changes are going to be successful if we were to move forward on any of them?
I think that's a great question. I don't know that we've quite figured that out, but exactly what the metric would be for seeing how well the changes that we would implement or if they're effective, but I think that will be part of the ongoing conversation to figure out how we best measure that.
Okay. I will say, centralizing permitting, that'd be something that I would like to see. I know that we're seeing a lot of movement in SF, so I would like to see that. I also would encourage you all to have, I know you all are doing your outreach, but if there's a working group that you all can create with some external folks, just so you can get real-time feedback, I think that would help, not just on the commercial side, but on the mixed-use commercial side as well, just because I'm seeing some mixed-use buildings with empty storefronts, but the housing is up, so I'm wondering what are the barriers to that? I know there are some comments about social media. I've already asked this from our interim city manager. She's told me she's very focused on the library, but get that person to work in every department, in every division, because she's doing amazing things. What's her name? Kat?
At, yeah. And they're actually, and I will say it's a whole team, but Kat leads the team.
She's doing great. If we could just, I don't want to take up too much of her time, but just get some of her energy to our social media, that would be great. The other question I have, it actually speaks to some of the calls that came in today, as I'm also concerned about some of the safety issues we're having downtown. I know that there was supposed to be a follow-up meeting on St. Regis. I believe there's going to be one. I want the city manager to kind of speak to that if, in terms of, I know you don't maybe not have exact dates, but...
I don't have the exact date, but Dr. Amy Colbloom has been working with BACS. We've been trying to, we were planning two follow-ups, we're trying to time them, you know, appropriately, when we can actually make some, sort of announce some of the progress, but that is still in the works. We haven't forgotten it. We've been talking about it.
And then I know that I connected with the chief as I received some information from BART regarding the downtown BART station, so they are actively working with the public safety and BART, so hopefully that can help move the needle in terms of safety downtown. But otherwise, I would say just communication, coordination, clarity is what I'm looking for, and looking forward to seeing those changes updated very quickly. Thank you.
Councilmember Andrews, can I add just another thought I was thinking of? I'm part of a small developer, like incubator work group for the East Bay that some different nonprofits are putting on. It's more focused on housing, but it's basically aimed at exactly what you're saying. Sometimes the developers come in, they don't really know the process, so they're, it takes a long time because they're plants, this is the first time they're doing it, this might be their first business they're opening in this case. So the thought is to set up a series of like workshops and things to kind of support them and like teach them about the process, not to like promise us anything, because we've all talked about we have $0 and zero additional staff time. But I could see something in the future. We've done some successful workshops with like our Solar Tuesday program and with like some successful workshops with like working with street vendors in our library and things like that. I could see us having like a business-friendly series of workshops where like people interested in starting businesses, maybe once a quarter or something, we have like a standing workshop where we can kind of like, as staff, like have a training or something where we can walk them through the process, and then, yes.
Development Services Director, I am not adding anything to your plate, I just want to acknowledge that. I think it's a fabulous idea, but I am, I as a council member, am not doing that.
I know. I know. I appreciate the sentiments. I just want to say that, but our team is always looking for innovative ways in order to get the word out and find ways to work within our means. So I think it's a novel idea, and it's worked for other things, so I just think that that's, you know, something worth exploring anyway, and I don't, I'm not thinking you're adding anything to the plate.
Just want to acknowledge that.
Fiscal year '27. We'll just...
Okay. Well, I was just going to say maybe Urban Land Institute, East Bay EDA...
Yeah. Exactly. Reach out to other groups, kind of create some sort of a network, that if there are these businesses that are kind of floundering through the process because they've just never done it before, that maybe we can at least put together some resources or something for them in addition to the zoning code updates.
And a small business development center, they might be able...
Exactly.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zerminio.
Mayor, thank you, and thank you, bless you, salud. And thank you, the more we study this and the more we talk about it, I think the more that it will be improved, at least as far as the processes go. So I like all the ideas, I like all the recommendations. I just was a little concerned about consolidating. I'm not sure what it actually means, consolidate...
Consolidating the zoning districts, you mean?
Right. I'm not sure what would happen to Tennyson Road, Mission Boulevard, B or A Street, so I'm not, I would prefer that you concentrate on the other items, which are, in my mind, they're more tangible.
Yeah. All the corridors, all the commercial areas would stay the same. It's just more of like, you know, right now, we have like regional commercial, general commercial, light industrial commercial. We just have like a lot of different commercial districts. Other cities have like three commercial districts, you know, we have 18. So maybe it's like, they all stay commercial districts, but maybe, you know, for some of our commercial districts where there's like, you know, we have some commercial districts where there's literally one property in the city that that's commercial district. Maybe we just rezone it so it's named the same as another commercial district. So it's not to say that we're going to be rezoning something where it becomes something totally different. It's just we'd be eliminating parts of the zoning code that don't need to be there. We'd be simplifying the zoning code essentially, simplifying the zoning map, but the same types of uses that exist around the city would still be allowed to exist.
All right. Okay. So with that, you explained that I can understand a little better. The concept of live and work is a good one, where you take the house and you allow the business downstairs. That's excellent. So very good ideas. I really want us to push having all places that are empty filled. I think that's something that's very, very important. It happens on Tennyson Road. Everything is filled on Tennyson Road, but it's not happening on B Street. So let's follow the Tennyson Road model, whatever it may be. A couple of suggestions, I'm sure that maybe we'll talk about them later, but I think you ought, want to put them somewhere on your to-do list, because it will mean improvement to the economic climate of our city. So make A Street two ways, and then on B Street, experiment with car-less weekends. In my mind, that has worked everywhere. Parklets, I don't mind parklets, because we have two parking garages where they can park, so I don't see that as a problem. Speed up the permitting process, please, so you have some ideas, you've already spoken a little bit about it. The empty space by the bank on B Street, it's taking too long to put a BART wagon there, and it's time for it to be done. The corner of B and Main Street, could you imagine a nice six-story building with a nice thing at the bottom? Let's get that baby built, too. I don't know what it'll take for the process to be sped up, because I'm not a planner, I don't know exactly what the process is, but see if it can, if there's a way to do Parking, if we take Main Street between A and C, we can, let's allow parking on the east side of Main, because there are some businesses there that all they see are cars whizzing by without being able to stop and park there, so that's an idea. So again, right, yes, on the recommendations, and I have two other suggestions. As has been done over south of the border, they collect street vendors and they find them a place for them to operate, for them to gather. Okay? And this has happened, I've seen it in Guatemala, Costa Rica, I've seen it in Panama and Mexico. So that is something that maybe we can look into, that may be a process that may start, having them think about, okay, how can I become a licensed business? At the moment, we only have one street vendor that is licensed on us. Okay. So, and that takes me to a sad situation that I shared with our city, with the city manager. Saturday, I was over at El Pastorcito on Tennyson Road buying my menudo for my Sunday, and Don Jose tells me, it's Saturday about 5:30, not a single person in this restaurant, so he tells me that he and the owner of Taqueria Arandas, right across the street, and La Placita, which is on Tennyson and Tampa, are thinking about closing up shop because of the amount of street vendors that have gathered on Tennyson Road. And his first question... And his first question was, how much money do they contribute to the city? And I said, well, silch. So that's a sad situation. That's really one, I, I would like to work on that a little bit more. I know there are some problems, but we need to prioritize that. I have a friend who wants to open up a restaurant on Tennyson Road. He's got the money, he's got the know-how, but he will not do it until we get rid of the street vendors on Tennyson Road. And he has been successful in other restaurants. Okay, so with that in mind, I do agree with the, the callers who stated that unhoused, homeless in our downtown is not a very good idea. So I would like to hopefully convince you that we ought to have zero tolerance for street vendors or mobile restaurants and unhoused in our downtown. And I think though, that will help our business, business owners. I know there are businesses out there who want to come in, but they just are unsure. You spoke a little bit about having different kinds of businesses, so I'm curious as to what kind of business was allowed at the corner of Foothill and B Street? It's kind of a venue that you rent for parties? And I'm not sure if that's the kind of business that we want. I mean, I'd rather have seen a restaurant or something else. I don't know what kind of business that is.
Nothing's been approved for that location yet, so.
Yeah, it's too late now.
No, no, nothing has been approved yet. They have submitted an application and it's still under review. Nothing has been approved yet. So I'm just providing you an update on that location.
So let's get something that can be retail. I don't know what can I, you know, we used to have a doggy shop, you know, so I, something, you know, the barbershop, whatever. That's a prime location. And congratulations on the Azucar Cafe on the other side there. And if you need any help getting all this done, please let me know. You know where I live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Councilmember Goldstein.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the report and its, this process has been a long time in the works and I appreciate everyone staying with it and making progress with it. I'm always hoping we're going to make a little bit faster progress. And this is no ding on you, I just understand that, you know, these things take a while. It's just my greatest hope is that we can work through some of these issues, especially if there are issues that we can work through faster than the others, rather than having, you know, one big plan that has to get a stamp of approval in, in order to make it happen, if we can piecemeal it. So for example, I'm thinking the, the permitting, you know, some permits seem to me like they ought to just be, you, you apply and you get one. Or as, as you put it, it's an inherent use, right-to-use. So you have the building and you want to do X, Y, Z with it, you know, go for it. So if there are things that we can do, I mean, I, I would like you to be, you know, thinking about what those conditional use permits and administrative use permits, what they actually accomplish? Are they actually doing something or are they just, as I think one of you up there called it red tape? And if we don't need it, let's dispense with it. There might be, for example, now, I'm not, I'm not advocating for more beer and wine sales. I have my own personal issues that, you know, drive me against that sort of thing, but I understand the rest of Hayward may want those things. And so if that's the case and they've got an existing business there and what they want to do is add beer and wine sales, I understand the state of California has its requirements. But if we're adding additional requirements to that that maybe aren't really necessary, then, then I think we ought to consider that because it would contribute to the economy down there. Likewise, for small-scale live entertainment activities, I, I say if somebody wants to do something like that and there's no reason to deny it, just, you know, rubber stamp the approval. If it turns into a problem, maybe we have to look at that down the road. So maybe that kind of, you know, you get a permit guaranteed the first time, but if you're a problem, if you're not taking care of it, then maybe not so much, right? Slow the roll, right? But otherwise, I, I think we need to give people that opportunity to try some things out. The, everything else that you suggested up here, I like except for, except accessory commercial units and residential properties. On the one hand, I like the idea, but I would not want to see all of a sudden more food vendors popping up. I think one of the callers had a specific objection to sex shops and cannabis stores and stuff like that. But, you know, if somebody wanted to open up a, I don't know, a neighborhood thrift shop or an arts and crafts studio or a yoga studio or something else like, like that, I'd, I'd think that would be highly acceptable and desirable. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other speakers. I don't see, it's not picking up, so, so I'll start with my left. Councilmember Syrup and then Councilmember Roach.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll have to figure out this, maybe I updated my OS recently and it's not talking to your machine. Anyway, first of all, thank you for this report. I think it's really exciting. This to me is really the most valuable way that we as a council and as a city can encourage economic development. I think it's great for us to have really forward-thinking campaigns and advertising our businesses downtown. But at the end of the day, the foundation that we lay for our businesses, I think is really what's going to bring in the money or not bring in the money. So just appreciate all the thought and work that went into this, both with your department and our Economic Development Department as well. I want to say that I agree with the callers that we need to support our current businesses. I think this is one of the ways that we do that, is we make sure that our downtown and other business venues are leased up and attracting foot traffic. Places feel safer when there are more eyes on the street and making our downtown more of a destination and providing more options does just that. So this is a win-win for everyone as we think about how we attract other businesses. Our businesses downtown also benefit from that. I also just want to say for the record, I love that we have an intimacy store in Hayward and I'm happy we have a dispensary. Humans have sex, humans enjoy legal cannabis. I'd rather our residents have access to those amenities in our city and not have to drive to another city and us to lose that tax revenue. And I think that complaints can like, that can feel disingenuous when we have a high density of bars and alcohol is statistically linked to more casualties, disease and crime than cannabis or vibrators. But we accept those dangers because we respect the autonomy of adults and put laws in place to discourage bad behavior. So I just want to encourage us to examine our biases and continue to make data-informed decisions. I do agree that we should think about safety as we talk about how we build out our downtown and other residential areas. I've floated before, and I know it's not a super popular idea, but I'm going to surface it again, we could pay for downtown traffic enforcement through a parking program. We did one, I think, back in 2018. It was cost recovery, so it wouldn't have an impact on the general fund and it would allow for there to be traffic patrol in the downtown to facilitate public safety so that we wouldn't have to take an officer off the beat. I would encourage us to think about implementing a traffic, sorry, a, a parking program, a parking enforcement, not traffic enforcement, a parking enforcement program downtown sometime in the future as a way of generating the, the fees necessary to pay for better public safety downtown. And there are some business owners, many of whom that we know, that are supportive of this idea. As far as the direction that you're looking for, I agree with streamlining the permitting model where we can. There's a East Asian country that has this North Star that says it should only take one visit for a business owner to get everything they need from the public agency they're interfacing with. I know it's a very lofty goal, but ideas like the one you threw out, like a workshop, are great. Rather than doing it quarterly, can we record it and have it be part of an orientation for anybody that's interested in applying, for them to watch before they apply, to minimize the amount of steps and handholding that you have to do as staff, right? I think having this goal of one visit should be enough as a North Star gets us to think critically about our logistics and our processes of the city and streamline not just the permitting process as it has to do with interfacing with our technology system, but also our staff time. And I know you're all thinking about this too, I just wanted to put that aspiration out there. I really liked getting information about demographics downtown. You know, it is sad that we're missing a lot of younger people like students as part of one of the top demographics. I know we get families coming out in general, but we have schools, a high school, a middle school. A lot of folks, I think, would love to come out to the downtown if there's more for them. I remember in high school, I would sometimes take BART out to Berkeley just to experience a slightly fuller or slightly larger downtown as a teenager. As an adult, I'm pretty content with the options here and I just don't have as much time to go out there. I like the approach, I mean, one of the recommendations was activating vacant properties. I'm wondering if there's incentives or fees that can be waived. I mean, what are the, what's, what are the carrots and what are the sticks? Because what I felt like was missing from this was, I would, even our residents said, can we update our vacant property ordinance to add a bit more of a stick? Can we expand our definition of blight? Is there a way for us to incentivize that landlord supporting the tenant improvements in exchange for some incentive with the city, right? Like, I just, I, I'd like to see a bit more creativity around the activation of these vacant buildings, both on the carrot and stick front, and that's where I felt like this report was a little bit lacking. Do we know where people are taking the survey from? Because when people say, I go to Dublin, Castro Valley and Pleasanton, I feel like there's probably a skew towards the 94542 zip code.
So our interactive dashboard, actually, we did collect the zip code information for the people who were taking the survey. So you can look at a map where all of these people are from. I will say the majority of them were from Hayward.
Okay. And which part of Hayward is what I'm asking?
That, that one I don't know off the top of my head.
And it's really important that we understand that because different residents have different needs, yeah?
But you can literally click on like different zip codes and it'll, it'll correlate with this zip code had these results, this, this code had these results, this age group had these results. It's really cool if you want, you can break it down by a lot of different.
Okay, I'll dive into that. Thank you. Yeah. I just want to make sure we're, you know, representing, because the, the city surveys that we send out are helpful and informative for understanding community needs, but we also are aware that unless we do something to the scale of our resident satisfaction survey, we're getting a very small perspective. I'm supportive of the accessory commercial units. I, I was a little disappointed that the focus was so much on the downtown because I believe we had a strategic goal about looking at how we can maybe activate more commercial zones throughout the city as a way of making our neighborhoods more walkable. And I actually think with the tension we have with sidewalk vendors, this is a great opportunity to transition them into a brick and mortar, where we're actually able to get them to pay the city the appropriate fees, be able to tax them appropriately, right? So we're actually building that full ladder to help them transition from a vendor to a legitimate business. And then we're having them pay their fair share to the city and increasing competition and providing more options for our residents. So I'm very supportive of those, but I would like to see that, that focus. We can start with the downtown emission to begin, but I actually think they're more beneficial in other retail deserts across the city that would allow us to actually have more walkable neighborhoods and address one of our climate goals in the process. I also think having accessory commercial units will do what we're trying to do by building more housing, which is drive down commercial rents. I think one thing I felt, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't see a study of commercial rents in this report. And when I've talked to some of the, the property owners and some of the, the business owner, the business owners that are tenants of those properties, some of what these rents that are being charged for our Hayward businesses are up there with San Francisco businesses. And we're, we're not San Francisco. And that feels like it's really stifling our ability to attract new businesses. And if we have accessory commercial units that are able to offer a space for businesses to operate that make them competitive with some of the downtown locations, I think that might have the same pressure that us building more housing is supposed to have on driving down the costs in the housing market too. So I would like for us to move forward with the ACUs because we just need more commercial spaces across the city to provide amenities and make more walkable neighborhoods and drive down commercial costs. I heard you mentioned that you were looking at, you know, maybe changing up or loosening the cabaret ordinance, but only for existing businesses. I, I like, I mean, you said in reference to Sacramento, am I incorrect in saying that or are we just saying it, changing it in general?
We did reference Sacramento and we do want to help existing businesses, but this is also for, for new uses or new owners as well.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure because I think there is a hunger for some nightlife. I mean, I will have some late nights Friday and people are bummed out at 1:00 AM or 2:00 AM when everything closes. And that's a lot of young folks that are interested in spending money and providing the city with sales tax revenue. I understand there's safety concerns and staffing concerns around that and we have to balance that need, but what I'm seeing is, when we look at the key demographics for the downtown in the report that we just paid for, there's young singles that want to be out and we're not providing that opportunity for them. We're stifling the nightlife and you can tell by any Friday night at the Dirty Bird just how hungry people are for options. And the Funky Monkey and the Turf Club and, you know, people are still bummed out when they all have to close. So I just, I just wanted to make sure we're, we're not just limiting it to existing businesses, but encouraging a, a more vibrant nightlife. Sorry, let me just work my notes. And for entertainment zones, I'd like to pilot entertainment zones. So I love when we have our downtown street parties and you can look at the space between the theater in Casa del Toro and there are people enjoying live music, there are people talking out in the middle of the road. And if, we wanted to start with just having an entertainment zone from Foothill to Main Street and just that little strip of B Street where you have a number of bars, you have a number, you already have outdoor seating. I mean, we don't have to necessarily do that, but I would say let's start with a pilot where it's, you know, on, on, you know, First and Third Thursdays, we, that gets closed off and it becomes an entertainment zone, right? Like, let's try it out, let's not just go 100%, the whole downtown's an entertainment zone, everyone's allowed to walk around with a beer, right? Like, let's, let's see how it feels and then maybe expand it out from there. Parklets, very supportive of. I was just walking through Rockridge the other day, so many beautiful restaurants, small restaurants that have parklets with, full of people enjoying the outdoors. I, I don't think, if I asked any person that was sitting outside, hey, do you think that this should be a parking spot instead? I don't think a single person would say, actually, yeah, this should just be pavement. So, you know, I, I think it's, it's a great amenity, but I want to make sure that we have a safety plan for anyone that decides to install one. How are they securing it at night? How do we make sure that vandalism does happen in a city of over 150,000 people? You know, what is our plan around that? What kind of costs do people expect? Because if they do get vandalized, they could be an eyesore downtown as well, right? So we want to make sure we're thinking about everyone that's going to interface with it. And let me see if I have any, the last thing I just wanted to add is, about two years ago, we, we talked about this food and drink policy. 50% of your sales have to come from alcohol, the other 50% have to come from food. We're the only city that's doing that, to my knowledge, in the area. I mean, can we just get rid of that as part of this package too? Like, I really just think with this thrust, let's just do everything we can to get out of our own way and, and really be this business-friendly city that we're putting up on the presentation here. We, you know, it's, it's been two years, I don't know if that's had the intended impact or consequences, but if no other cities have it, I don't see why we shouldn't have to keep it. And then I think that's pretty much all I've got. Did I answer all your questions or is there anything on that list that's been unaddressed? Okay. Great. Thank you so much for this. I'm really excited for the work that you're doing here. I think this is going to have significant implications for our city. Yes, really appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Roach.
Thank you. I'm going to start with your questions for discussion just so, and then I'll go to my notes. But yeah, as far as making beer and wine more permissible, I guess, you know, within reason, I mean, you know, I think it would be sort of situational, like if you're going to change some of the entertainment, you know, zones or something, maybe we look at that. Because, yeah, I wouldn't be in favor of just general open carry, but maybe if there, you know, I think Councilmember Syrup's point to, we have, you know, some specific times or, or specific entertainment zones that we create almost like mini street parties, which I think is what Councilmember Syrup was getting at, like that would be interesting to me. You know, I, I sort of think of the pocket park there on, you know, I mean, like that would be cool if that was music on certain nights because that would bring people right to downtown. You know, I've seen that in other cities where they have like a, you know, every Thursday it's, you know, music in the pocket park, whatever. So, so yeah, so this idea, this specific entertainment zones, if that would get people downtown, I'm, I'm open to that. The ACUs, well, I've, I've lived in other cities where, yeah, you would have a coffee shop on the corner in a residential neighborhood or, or, you know, Councilmember Goldstein's point, you know, sure, a yoga studio or a, an art studio or something like that. Yeah, I can see why maybe we'd want to be a little bit discern, discerning if you're bringing it into a neighborhood, that maybe there would be some concern about the type of use. But yeah, I mean, a coffee shop, I mean, I got to admit, I remember when I visited Baltimore a while ago, Baltimore was awesome. They had all these corner bars and like the bottom of a, like a multi-unit building. And it was so cool because it added community, like everybody knew that was the place to go to. So I'm not, I'm not sure I'm advocating adding bars in this ACU scenario, but there is, you know, and even when I lived in Denver, you know, there would be, you know, just a small sort of one or two commercial sort of, you know, with, you know, you know, one block or something within a neighborhood and it, you know, allowed people to walk, it created those third spaces, that kind of thing. So, you know, if this, if ACUs can do that, I'm, I'm open to that. So, you know, please, you know, take that as my, you know, please look into it. Okay, and then on my notes, I, you know, as far as, you know, getting more people downtown, getting more young people, I, I remember when I lived in DC as a student intern and everybody, you know, we were all students, we were all broke and everybody knew like, you know, Monday night was empanadas at the Elephant Bar, Tuesday night was sliders at Shooter McGee's, you know, that, that, you get the idea. Every night, we knew where to go every night. And, you know, and if there, if we, if the downtown was able to do that with, you know, know, the CSU, or with Chabot, or something like that, you know, maybe in today's market, it's Boba on Fridays, you know, that kind of thing, you know. But, you know, to get, to sort of be a little bit more purposeful, to bring populations like, like, young people downtown, and then create those environments where they can stay a little bit longer. But, you know, obviously, it does a lot to get people, you know, get people downtown, you know, give them some cheap food, they'll stay and have a few drinks. It worked for me. But I also feel like the public safety sort of has to be coordinated with all this, like, business-friendly means it's safe. And so, what we can do to couple those things are, obviously, in this there, because being business-friendly is a place where families and, you know, people feel safe going downtown. And, you know, we do have all of this parking, but a lot of women that I know don't feel safe parking in the back parking lots, and so might just skip it if they're going to have to walk by themselves back to the parking lot after a certain hour. And so, I think it's going to have to be coupled with a public safety approach, so. And I know we have to do both, so, you know, to the caller's point, like, yes, these are issues, we're working on them simultaneously, but we have to do the good work that we're doing to try to figure out a way to be more business-friendly. You know, and to that point, yes, of course, streamlining permitting is always going to be the way to go. And then, and then also to sort of create more, like, creative permits, right? So, you know, for example, to create, you know, permits to allow people to do short-term pop-ups, and what that looks like, so that's a streamlined permit, maybe that's a sort of, you know, by right permit, I don't know. Or, you know, for example, like, the things we're talking about, you know, the shipping container restaurant doesn't follow a regular building permit, but it, but maybe we need to be more creative in how we're allowing some of these new, sort of, modern ways of doing business used, so that we're not holding it up with, that we're not being too rigid. You know, and I hear you, that's what you're trying to do with this, so, you know, so, you know, please do that. And then as far, it was interesting to see the key demographics, and I wanted to ask you, what are we doing for, you know, we're seeing more senior living places opening downtown, how will that change that, and are we doing anything to make those more, those areas more walkable? You know, I have, I know, I guess Director Mary's not here now, but I have asked him before about putting some more safe crossings in those zones, and because, you know, we have two now on the same block, and I believe there's another one that's going to be opening further, I think, is it Second Street, maybe? Yeah, I mean, have you looked at that? Like, is that a growing demographic that you see using downtown, or are they pretty insular within their communities?
That's a good question. I know, and Christine from Metivation is here, who put that report together. The singles, I know when we all think of singles, we tend to think of young people, but the report specifically calls out diversely aged singles. So that means singles of different ages, which would include older people. And the Safe Streets project that is going on downtown and in other places in the city is looking at different modalities. So that would include people, not necessarily just driving downtown, but also walking. And I see Christine just popped on.
Did you want to add something, Christine?
Oh, I just mentioned about senior housing. It's a positive thing. Typically, seniors do walk, and they do want the necessity goods and services downtown within walkable distances. So it is something that, again, could be planned around with regards to retail locating close to them.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think as that emerges, as more and more of those buildings get filled up, that will be important. The other thing is, you know, the ground floor uses, you know, you do see other cities, and I think I've talked to Paul a little bit about this, other cities using sort of open, you know, vacant storefronts as art, or art exhibits, or staged, you know, fronts, things like that. You know, I know not every owner is interested in doing that, but, and I know we don't have resources to add someone to do that, but what, I mean, is there, what do you think about the Paul as far as, like, motivating vacant properties? Because they're, right, it's killing us to see some of these storefronts looking so dilapidated. Just wondering if you have any input on that.
Wow, that's a loaded question, I could probably talk for two hours on ideas to tackle the vacant storefront issue and the, what I would characterize as absentee property owner and the unengaged property owner. So there, you know, the economics of why these places are vacant, you know, there's just so many different variables.
Yeah.
You know, one thing that the consultants have pointed out in the report is that a lot of the spaces downtown, while we, they're very visible, but they've been vacant for better part of 15, 20, you know, 25 years. And because they've been vacant for so long, they, those spaces do not offer the amenities or the infrastructure any modern retailer would need. They're either too big, there's no trash, there's no, you know, the access is, you know, outdated, there's, you know, to bring it up to code today is, requires a tremendous amount of money, and that's why, to your point, that's why a lot of the rents are so high, right? And so, you know, the challenge is finding the business that's willing to pay to make all those improvements, but still not own the building. So to build a restaurant, you know, could be, you know, 452, you know, a million five. Do you put 452 million five into a building in downtown Hayward that you don't own, or do you do it in a building in maybe another, you know, one of our comparative communities in the report, where, you know, arguably, the demographics might lend to more long-term business success? So that, if I had a perfect answer, I've had a magic bullet, if I could, you know, get these storefronts full and engaged in property owners, and at minimum, get them to at least put art from the Hayward Art Council or something in the windows, it's been, it's been a grind. So I think, to Councilwoman's point, it is important to keep at it, keep iterating on the carrot and the stick side. And, you know, the industry is split, and maybe Christine first can kind of comment on the stick side, because I've been to a number of talks where, you know, this notion of the stick and increasing the vacant property ordinance, adding taxes, and, you know, really hammering it and trying to tip, you know, influence the tipping point, where keeping the vacant property vacant is not economically or financially feasible for the property owner. And it's, there's two schools of thought, whether continuing to, you know, march down a punitive approach, a stick approach, you know, they just become even more entrenched, because, like I said, these things have been vacant for 20, 30 years, they own these buildings outright, there's not, the tipping point is pretty, has to be pretty severe. And then, you know, that adds a lot of cost to incoming tenants, and there's so many different variables, that I just don't have the perfect answer, I wish I did.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, as long, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if I could jump into the temporary question, because I think you were also acting like, how do we, while they're vacant, like, how do we activate some of these spaces? I think that's also a good answer, or a good example of how we can get out of our own way. For example, right now, we require temporary use permits for a lot of these, like, temporary spaces, where, like, if you wanted to have pop-ups, or like, a food truck on a vacant lot, you know, temporary use permits cost $2,000. They, you have to notice them to neighbors, they're good for six months, they take a few months to process. That's a big barrier for something that's not even going to be there that long. That's the exact type of thing where we could have a simpler process, it's processed much more quickly, we're just checking boxes to see if you, you know, align with certain zoning requirements, and then can issue that easier. So like, there are things we can't control, all the things that, you know, Paul just mentioned, but then there are things that we can control, to at least say, let's at least get ourselves out of the way of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to add, piggyback on that, so that's a valid point. So what we're talking about today, planning staff is talking about the land use question, right? And then you have the site economics, building it out. So even if planning was to, able to, you know, clear the path, make the temporary permits cheaper or free, you know, that's one variable. The other variable is, it doesn't, even if it's free to get the temporary use permit to do whatever, pop-up, extoring pop-up, or whatever, to even get into that building to operate, you're still going to need to bring that building up to code, that's thousands and thousands of dollars. So it only addresses a very small part of the equation, and so we do have to think about a more comprehensive approach, from making the entitlement or planning process streamlined and predictable and easy and understandable, and then getting that business interested, and then walking, and then incentivizing or somehow preventing that carrot to make it financially feasible for them to make those investments, and then get through the permitting, the building permit process itself. So there's a, there's multiple number of stages.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thanks, I mean, it sounds like you're still looking at what the carrot and the stick look like. Yeah, because, I mean, I can see, like, if, you know, if there's something really hot, like, La Boobas are hot, right? And somebody's like, "I want to, I need to set up a shop right now for La Boobas, I want it for six months," right? They can't wait for all this, and maybe they don't need any tenant improvements, they're like, "Just give me a space right now." I mean, it seems like that's the kind of idea.
Or like, if you've been to, like, Makers Row, for example, in Berkeley, like, those are outdoor spaces, or like, you know, a food truck parking on a lot, like, that's not tenant, like, there are versions of this activation that don't require that kind of investment. So, yeah, there's different levels of it. But Paul's totally right, there's certain versions of this that, like, we have heard over and over again, from the property owners, from the tenants, that are like, this costs, the numbers don't work out. That, that's not going to be fixed by this project, that's going to be fixed by a different economy. But, you know, there are at least little, you know, lower-hanging fruit that we can fix, and that's kind of what we're aimed at.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for being creative and up into new ideas, and I appreciate all the work on the, on the report. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anyone else. I want to make just a few comments, and I want to really be concise here, because I, I agree with a lot of that has been said up here. You know, I, on a macro level, I want to just sort of comment about, you know, just considering what Mr. Noonien said about, you know, there's a land use issue, but then there's the, you know, investment in the building. And, you know, I look at all these buildings, and if all these buildings in downtown require hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, to do something in there, I mean, is it, you know, are we sitting, you know, are we looking at a bunch of buildings that potentially is cheaper to bring down and then build a new building? Or is it worth renovating the current building? I mean, I, you know, I don't know what the economics are, but, you know, if you need, you know, traps for restaurants, you need, you know, ADA, you need electrical, Wi-Fi, I mean, you know, I look at, you know, I look at some of these buildings, and they simply don't have the infrastructure. And, you know, I don't know if, you know, if the problem's even greater, where, you know, we start to look at, you know, we start to look at the potential of, you know, asking the building owners a different question, you know, and that is, you know, are you willing to bring the building down and then build another building? I know there's, I'm sure there's folks out there right now, I know there's one or two people right there, right now, that are looking at, watching me and listening to me, that are having a heart attack, because they want the buildings to stay, you know, the way they are. But the way they are right now is making absolutely nothing for us. And all they are doing is being empty, and they've been empty for 20, 30 years. So anyways, I, you know, we have been talking about empty buildings up here for a very, 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 very long time. My second point is, you know, I want to, you know, I want to remind, also want to remind folks, you know, I know today is a different reality, and we're having very different conversations, you know, of our financial position. But, you know, last year, or two years ago, the city took a position to invest in arguably the largest economic development site in the city, and that was the movie theater. And, you know, our fear was that if that building went empty, you know, the building would remain empty for a very long time. And, you know, it's good to see that there's businesses being, you know, that are opening up in there, there's some activity in there. But, you know, I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that we up here, the city up here, you know, took a chance, and took the investment risk to hold on to an asset in our downtown with the, with the, with being mindful of what might potentially would have happened if that building went empty. And, and so, you know, I, you know, I get very leery when I, when I see businesses close, or when I see businesses shift, because I worry about what goes in there. Councilmember Sir Manio brought it up, and I did hear Director Bowser's comment about, you know, B and Foothill, but I'm a little leery and nervous about what might go in there. And, and so, you know, that, that is an issue, and I think about that, you know, a lot. Regarding seniors, just a quick comment about seniors, you know, when we, when we approved the 808A Street project right across the shopping center of Lucky's, we held on to street-level commercial down there, because the vision was to have retail in there that would respond to, you know, seniors, or, you know, the folks that would live in the building. And the shelves down there have remained empty since then. So we, you know, we have been doing our part up here to, you know, to do that, even under, you know, even under ordinances not in here, but, you know, we have been doing some stuff in that space, and, you know, and so forth, so. The, another comment I want to ask is, you know, so we have, you know, we have a lot of these recommendations, and, you know, I'm really trying to stay positive here, and because I feel we've been having this conversation up here for a long time. Permits, streamlining, empty buildings, I mean, these are conversations, you know, we've been having for a very long time. And, you know, and, you know, no disrespect to the authors of the report, but, you know, the demographics, I mean, you know, if we're drilling down deeper on the, if drilling down deeper of the demographics is what's different about this report, I mean, you know, I'm shocked that we, you know, that it took now that, to understand that, you know, we have an incredibly large student population in our city. I mean, you know, Cal State, Chabot, that every, you know, for every Friday night, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, that they, that there's nothing to do down here. Just a little, and the potential, I mean, we keep saying this term, potential. It was at, a couple of weeks ago, I was at Buffalo Bills, and I forget what night it was, I forget what night it was, but Buffalo Bills has a new program now, where they're, one of the nights, they show, it's film night at Buffalo Bills. I went in there, had dinner, and it was packed, and it was like some random night. It was packed, and it was all Cal State, it was all Cal State East Bay students. And, and so, so clearly, you know, there's, 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 you know, there's interest in going down there. And so, you know, when I look at, you know, in terms of, when I go back to the questions here, it says, allowing, you know, small-scale live entertainment activities with a simplified permitting process? I mean, live entertainment activities, if you want, I mean, maybe you're, maybe you're talking about, you know, music and so forth, but, but like, the recipe that Buffalo Bills was doing that one random night, like, it works. I mean, the place was packed, right? And I can only imagine if there was a band in there, you know? And so, and these are things that, you know, the chamber's been asking for, we've been asking for, these are things that, you know, students have been asking for, we put a shuttle right in front of downtown, you know, to do this. And so, you know, I just, you know, I, so, let me go to the questions. Make wine beer sales more permissible? Yes. I mean, I think, you know, yes, make it safe, all the safety precautions out there, all of that. I'm not saying that, starting tomorrow, we're going to, you know, start walking down, up and down B Street, and, you know, but, you know, but absolutely. You know, we live in a college town, there's colleges and universities, I mean, we're here, right? We're a city of young families, we're a city of students, we're a city, I mean, I mean, you know, I don't need to point to any other examples of college towns to show you, we've all lived in them, and so, you know, we have the assets here, let's do it, and let's figure out a smart, safe way of doing it. You know, allowing small-scale live entertainment activities with simplified permitting process? Yes. You know, I mean, absolutely. And we, it should be, you know, we should have something every night, you know? We, you know, amplified it on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. You know, I mean, football, the NFL, football's on now, right? So we have football on Thursday nights, football on Saturdays, football on Sundays, football's on Mondays. I mean, you know, and football season's all the way into February now, right? And so, you know, there should be, you know, you know, World Series, there should be a World Series and a DJ, I mean, you know, that kind of stuff. I mean, we have the restaurants, we have the facilities, they should be able to do it, and it should be easy, just make it easier to do it, right? Identifying specified entertainment zones that potentially include open-carry alcoholic beverages? Absolutely. You know, places that make it, the places that, that make it smart, right? I'm not saying, you know, in any random neighborhood, we're going to start having open carry, you know, that's not going to happen. But, you know, in places where, where it makes sense, and where there's street festivals or outdoor festivals, you know, absolutely. I mean, we should, we should be able to do that. You know, the commercial, the accessory commercial units, I thought that was kind of interesting. First thing I thought about was, you know, the streets of Chicago, you know, and the suburbs of Chicago, where, you know, you can walk through the neighborhood, and there's, you know, neighborhood bars and neighborhood restaurants and so forth. You know, and then I started thinking, you know, what neighborhoods do we have that have like a, one of those, like, bodega, sort of a bodega-looking thing? But, you know, maybe, you know, when we start looking at redeveloping housing in some of of the, um, you know, Mission Boulevard corridor, maybe that's something we start thinking about. You know, what can we embed in a corner, or what can we embed, you know, something like that? I think that's, you know, you know, uh, I think that's good. But the, the, um, but yes, I, I do agree with the, with the planning commission, I was gonna say, uh, because what I don't want, I don't want us to go so liberal on this where we start to see, you know, um, cause we're seeing them already. Um, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna see like garages and people's homes start opening up now as restaurants. Um, and that's, you know, um, you know, I know right now, let me, let me clarify with that because, uh, there is an example out there that I know somebody's thinking about. But, um, I know right now, the, Alameda County right now has, um, some kind of a permit program or some kind of a program where you can, people can use their backyards as, as restaurants, or they can cook commercially and serve commercially. Um, I, I, let's look at that. I don't, I don't know what ordinance or policy it is, but I, I'd be willing to look at that and see what that is. Um, but I, you know, I wanna be, I wanna be very careful. I know that right now we're having a very difficult time trying to get a handle on street vendors, um, and, um, they are impacting our businesses, our, our brick and mortar businesses, um, and, you know, it's a, it's a very complicated issue. Um, and, you know, I don't wanna get into all the, all the, all the, the dynamics of, of that issue, but, um, you know, I think objectively speaking, uh, they are having an impact on, on brick and mortar. I mean, and we, you know, we just need to understand that and, and sort of acknowledge that. But, uh, but anyways, I, I do agree with the planning commission. Once we get a handle on that aspect of, um, of vending, then I think we should tackle the, um, you know, the commercial side. Um, you know, I just, uh, you know, I have a question here, I wrote, it says, you know, now that we have this plan, uh, when can we start, you know, when, when can we start implementing it? And, you know, and, and, you know, and what's the, what's the timeline? I, uh, you know, um, a few years from now, I don't wanna be, you know, I don't wanna be sitting here and saying, hey, you know, this is the demographics of downtown and, you know, the, the prohibitive factors of the loop, we know that. I mean, you know, it just, you know, we need to, we need to start doing this. Um, and, uh, I'll, I'll end where I started. Um, you know, when we bought that movie theater in downtown, we bought it with a, for a lot of purposes, but we bought it primarily to be the, um, the catalyst to create an environment to be that sort of, that buzz that brought people into downtown. And it had restaurants, it had a movie theater, you know, we talked about pop-ups, we talked about, I mean, the vision we had when we were going into this was big. Um, and, and we, uh, we anticipated and we expected, um, you know, development services, economic development, we, you know, uh, public works. We expected everyone to sort of work together and work with us to really make this investment, you know, um, peak. That was our, that was our, our, our plan. And, um, so anyways, I, I, I know today we're dealing with a different reality, but, um, you know, uh, a lot of the discussions we had last year, two years from now, I feel, are in here, and, um, you know, there, we've been talking about this for a long time, so. Thank you very much. Thank you to the consultants that are, uh, online, uh, and, um, you know, I look forward to this, uh, growing and hopefully you have what you need.
Yes, this was very helpful. Thank you all for your very thoughtful feedback. Um, just so you're aware of next steps, um, this was kind of the end of our roadshow, um, to the community, to the planning commission, to you all, to DHIA. Um, so we're gonna start revising the code based on everything that we heard, so next time you see us, we'll be with actual revisions, we'll kind of get a sense of are we right on track, do we need to make any tweaks, and then we'll adopt. So we're just gonna keep it going.
Great, great, yeah, go ahead.
Can we also see a workflow or a project plan or something to talk about the communication, internal communication, to make sure that?
As in like staff?
Yeah, not just code, just how the process will work and how it's gonna be expedited.
Sure, we can add that to the next report.
Okay, thank you very much, really appreciate it. Director Bowser, uh, economic officer, economic development officer, Nuyen, thank you very much. Okay, um, so I'd like to close this item, uh, and then we're gonna move on to our, uh, item number 12, legislative business, which is Cal Cities 2025 Annual Conference Adopt a Resolution, Resurrection Designating Voting Delegates and Alternates, uh, to the, uh, annual conference scheduled for October 8th through the 10th, uh, 2025, and, uh, Madam City Clerk.
Good evening again, Mayor and council members. The item before you, I'm sorry, we, as we bring up the PowerPoint, it's a two, three slide PowerPoint, Mayor. Yes, alright.
Did you say three slides?
Alright, so the, the item before you relates to the Cal Cities 2025 Conference, which is scheduled from October 8th to October 10th in Long Beach. Currently, Mayor Salinas is the city's delegate to Cal Cities East Bay Division, and Council Member Syrup is the city's alternate. According to Cal Cities, um, bylaws, the city council is required to designate a voting delegate and an alternate in order to represent the city's, um, uh, thoughts and, uh, and also invoke on resolutions. While Cal Cities didn't receive any resolutions, uh, by the August deadline, the General Assembly will convene if a petition resolution is introduced and qualified. Mayor Salinas and Councilmember Bonilla Jr. have, uh, registered to attend the conference and are available to represent the city's position on legislative matters at the business meeting, which is scheduled for October 10th. Mayor Salinas, that completes the brief, um, summary, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. And then, uh, I'll start off here, are there any questions up here on the dais? I don't see any. Uh, I will close the questions on the dais, go to public comment. Uh, I don't see any public comment, I don't have any public comment cards, so I will close public comment cards, or I will close public comment, and I will come back to, uh, the dais.
Um, I'd like to move that the mayor and Councilmember Bonilla be the, uh, voting member and alternate for the Cal Cities Conference.
Thank you, accepted, uh, moved by Councilmember Syrup.
Taga.
Seconded by Councilmember Goldstein, and, um, Madam City Clerk, are we gonna use the system?
Uh, yes, Mayor, and, um, thank you for your patience. We were having a difficult, technical difficulties this evening, but I believe the system is now up.
Sorry, I apologize, I just received a communication from Councilmember Bonilla that he won't be able to attend the Cal Cities Conference, and so I don't know if we want to just forego having a, uh, alternate and just appoint the mayor.
Probably that is wise, because, uh, any designee needs to be registered at this point.
Okay.
So then my motion would be amended to just say, um, supporting the mayor as our voting delegate, yes.
And I agree to the amendment.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Syrup, seconded by Councilmember Goldstein, uh, and then Madam City Clerk, if you could take the role.
Yes, Mayor, I'll go ahead and, uh, give it a try, if you could please refresh. I'll start the voting.
And item, you know, uh, item passes with six yeses, um, and with one absent, which is Councilmember Bonilla. Okay.
That's correct, thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to, uh, next item, legislative business, item number 13, which is, uh, Fiscal Year 2026 Salary Plan Amendment. Adopt a Resolution Approving an Amendment to the City of Hayward Salary Plan for Fiscal Year 2025, and our Director of Human Resources, um, Ian Tesco will present this.
And if I may just add, this is day two for Ian as, as our HR Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I appreciate you having me here. This report brings forward amendments to the salary plan for the current fiscal year. These amendments are grouped into three categories for this presentation. The first group of amendments reflect new classifications added to the salary plan effective September 22nd, 2025. You'll see in the top of the chart, the Fire Plans Examiner and the Senior Plan Checking Engineer are new classifications. The second group of amendments reflect increases previously agreed to as part of contractual obligations. Under the Hayward Police Management Unit, the classification of police captain, and then separately, the police chief are effective for June 30th, 2025. And the supervising plan checker and expediter, um, shows a typo on the, on the slide, that should be effective for September 22nd, 2025. The last group of amendments is related to the city's living wage ordinance established in 1999 and was designated to upwardly adjust and reflect a change in the Bay Area Consumer Price Index. Based on the city charter, Section 2, Article 14, the classification shown shall be adjusted to reflect a 1.5% increase effective June 30th, 2025. However, the mayor and council decided to forego the 1.5% increase effective June 30th, 2025. In addition, mayor and council will reduce their salaries by an additional 5% effective September 22nd, 2025, to help lead the city in addressing the current financial state of the organization. Staff recommends council adopt a resolution approving these amendments for their respective effective dates of June 30th, 2025, and September 22nd, 2025. And with that, I turn it back to you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so before I go to public comment, um, I will come up here to see if there's any questions from council to staff, and, uh, first question is, uh, Councilmember Syrup.
Sorry, I put my hand down, I had a comment afterwards, thank you.
Sorry, mine's not working, I guess.
Uh, okay, uh, Mayor Pro, let me see something first, let me, let me just do this. Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Roach.
Thank you, I was, thank you for the staff report. Um, I, I was wondering if you could sort of say a little bit more about the sort of legal contractual obligation for us to, and, and how we got here to the point that we're, we are looking at approving raises in, in our current budget crisis.
Sure, just, uh, as a point of administrative process, these contracts were approved prior to the recess, uh, because we have to take certain salaries through our personnel commission to be reviewed and then recommended back to council. The timing worked out, so that's, that's why you're seeing it now. Um, so it's an administrative process, there's a loophole, we're currently working on, uh, subcommittees with our personnel commission to figure out, does that make sense to continue in that order? Um, or does it make sense to make some adjustments so it can be more administratively less burdensome?
And as far as the legality involved, like, what would happen if we did not approve these, uh, contracts that have already been bargained for?
That would look as bad faith bargaining. These were contractually agreed to as part of, uh, MOUs, um, and, and I would not recommend that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'm asking, maybe this is a city's only question, or our city manager question is, you know, are we legally obligated to approve these because of how we got here with the negotiation?
That is my understanding, that we are legally obligated to do this, and also, in addition, if you didn't do it, there's also the potential of a perp charge against us.
Okay, and that incl, and that's for all of the, um, items that you see here?
All the increases.
I mean, except for our, our decrease, of course, but...
Correct, all of the increases presented are tied to contractual obligations.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Andrews.
I just also wanted to hear, since it's a legal item, I wanted to hear from our city attorney regarding the item.
Sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
Just confirming, if we can, if we can hear from the city attorney, why this is a legal obligation, I just wanted to hear that from the city attorney. Under, in your assessment, your analysis, so we can have it on record, why we are looking at this item.
Well, in this instance, I would respectfully, um... I understand that there are concerns about the compaction issue, and I also understand that the compaction issues in this particular set of recommendations is driven by, uh, MOUs that are in place, and that the council is constrained in not acting, uh, because of the language in the MOUs. And in that regard, I think a recommendation of the, the interim city manager and HR Director are legally defensible. That doesn't mean that compaction issues can't or should not be examined, uh, in the future, particularly where it's based on past practice. So those are my remarks, thank you.
Thank you. And then, um, this might be a question more for, uh, Director of HRs. Given the situation, do we have to go to personnel commissions for these types of items? Is it required, or is it just best practice that we do that? I appreciate all the services related, all the people doing service on personnel commission, just, in these times, just curious, um, if we need to do that.
Based on the language in our current municipal code, it is required that the personnel commission review and provide recommendation to the council on these items.
Okay, thank you for confirming.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Roach.
Thank you, I just wanted to add, you know, thank you to the city attorney for your comments, but I, just for the community's perspective, you know, we're using some acronyms up here, and so can you, so what does it mean to be obligated by an MOU?
An MOU is, uh, another term for a contract or an agreement. And so, in that regard, there are contracts with bargaining units, which include the compaction language. The compaction language in effect creates separations between different classifications, and the compaction language essentially says that as between the classifications, there may be like a 5% or 10%, in some cases a 15% separation, that when the, quote, lower classifications get salary increases, it compels increases in the higher classifications in order to maintain the compaction differential, whether it's, say, 10% or 15% in certain cases.
Okay.
And that's in the MOU Memorandum of Understanding, also a contract standard language in HR and in, uh, bargaining language.
Okay, thank you, yeah, and I just wanna be clear, my questions don't have anything to do with the actual groups that are affected by these raises, it's the simple consideration of the bu, budget crisis that we're under. I mean, everybody deserves what, what they're owed and what they were bargained for, it's just that, you know, given the current situation we're in to be showing raises is, is really, is really difficult from, for the community's perspective, and I, and that's why I'm really digging deep to have everyone understand that we, you know, these are things we contractually, legally, you know, obligated ourselves to before we realized how difficult our budget situation was, and so, I, I appreciate everybody for taking my questions on this.
Okay, uh, your name is still up here? Okay, okay, um, okay, I, I do not see any more, um, questions up here, so I will go to, uh, public comment. Um, I do not see any public comment, and so I will bring it back to, and I don't have any cards, so I will bring it back to the dais and see if we have any, uh, speakers who would like to make a motion or make, um, and/or, uh, moved by Councilmember Zermeño. Uh, and then, uh, well, hold on a second, is there a second? Or if not yet?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Goldstein, uh, Councilmember Syrup.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just wanna comment first on the council salaries and then just on the situation that we find ourselves in. First, on the council salaries, I just wanna express that I believe that council salaries ensure that these positions are more accessible to working-class people and voices that are typically and systemically excluded from positions of power, whose lived experience and perspective hold the solutions to our most pressing issues. I'm very protective of that principle, and I believe that fair pay for these roles makes our city more democratic. However, I understand the need for us as a council, along with our executive team, to lead by example, and so I support the cuts we're making to our own compensation tonight. To be clear, the savings from our cuts address a very small percentage of our budget deficit. It's largely symbolic, but it demonstrates that we're serious about the work ahead. Moving forward, I believe we owe it to our community to focus all available staff time toward addressing the meat of this deficit, and I would urge us to not spend more time talking about ourselves, uh, doing so would be fiscally irresponsible. For our labor partners, every one of them has met with us during our campaigns and while we've been on this council. They know us, and they know we believe deeply in the work that they do for the city and for its residents. The positive results in our most recent satisfaction survey are a testament to their care and dedication. We know that, and we've made our best effort to honor that dedication, especially as we emerge from a global pandemic. None of us want to be in this position, none of us wanted the city to be in this position, and none of us up here ran for office to arrive at a budget deficit. Uh, there are a number of reasons that we ended up here, but the buck ultimately stops with us, and I want to acknowledge that too. The only thing we can do now is move forward. Uh, difficult conversations lie ahead, and I'm hopeful that we can all come to the table as partners in good faith with a shared goal, ensuring the long-term health and fiscal sustainability of our city and the well-being of the residents we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Andrews.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna thank the council and the mayor for stepping up and doing the right thing by taking... thing by taking the first step in addressing our deficit here. And I want us to also really ask the staff, when we have initiatives, to be very transparent with us on how much it really costs the city. We understand you all want to help our efforts, want to make sure that we are fostering community engagement, economic development, but I empower you to tell us how much things cost and tell us what you all feel is within your capacity moving forward. I also empower you to tell us when items are something that are not within your control, something that you can ask our business community, our nonprofit partners, new initiatives, to feel free to tell us how much it actually costs so we can be more transparent with our budget. So, I just want to empower staff to do that. Don't, don't continue to let us dream big when we have very small wallets. So, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing all your, I know that a lot of you are working really hard. I just want to acknowledge that. I know every single one of you are working hard. But I need to see this level of activity every single week coming to the dais. I want to see this level of staff report on the agenda every single week so we can get to an answer faster. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. There are no more comments. And it has been moved by Councilmember Zermeño. It has been seconded by Councilmember Goldstein. And before we vote, I'd like to, I do want to make a couple of comments about this. You know, when I, when I first got elected in 2010, we were, the city was in the midst of an incredible economic downturn. And our recession was impacting the city in a great deal. And, you know, the council, we stepped up. We contributed more to our healthcare. We contributed more to our retirement. And we, and we also took a pay cut. And so, you know, we've, I think historically, the council has responded immediately in tough times, and we've, and we've done, you know, and to much extent, I like to say that we've led the way and shown and led by example. Conversely, I also want to acknowledge, and I, you know, Councilmember Andrews is on point, our executive team. There are, many of our executive team members are here, that were here back in 2010. And our executive team, right out the gate, also took pay increases to do their part in contributing to our fiscal situation back in 2010, 2011. Additionally, our union groups, our labor partners, also came to us and with seriousness, with care, with thoughtfulness, came to us and also made contributions and helped us in a tough economic time. Fast forward to today, and Councilmember Syrup is absolutely correct, none of us ran for office to be in this situation today. And this is a tough position to be in. Without, you know, there'll be plenty of time to talk about the situation and talk about how we got here and so forth. We will, you know, we are out in the community, we are talking to people, and, you know, we're, we are prepared to have those conversations anytime, anywhere. But I, but what I want to do is, I want to say this to the community more so. This council and this executive team is taking this issue very, very seriously. There's not a day that goes by that we don't think about this. I am sure if any of the council members are as serious as this as I am, we lose sleep over this. This is not something that is easy to work through. This is a very complex issue. There are many working parts. And it is stressful. It's stressful. And, but what gives me optimism is that at the end of the day, I think the council is coming together to find a solution. I think the council is working with our, with our executive team to come up with a strategy to get out of this. And our labor partners have, have also expressed thoughtfulness, lots of intentionality in figuring out ways on how we can contribute together to get out of this. This is not easy, and I need to emphasize this. We are in a place where, where I don't think we've found, we have ever found ourselves in, in a very, very long time, at least since I've been up here. And, but we are working on it. Not a day goes by that we do not talk about this, and we don't think about this, and we don't work on this. And so, I want to assure that what we're doing tonight, although it is, it might look to the observer a peculiar vote, it is a vote that we are contractually obligated to take. But nonetheless, like, like the comments that we have heard up here, from this point forward, we are examining every expenditure, every cost that goes out of this building. And, and so, with that, I wanted to thank staff for their work, thank the executive team, and thank all of our partners in the city moving forward. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you. Well-stated.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, we can take the vote.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Councilmember Zermeño moved the item, and Councilmember Goldstein seconded the item. So, I'm going to go ahead and start the vote and see if you could see it. Mayor Salinas, how would you like to vote? Okay, very good. Thank you.
And the item passes with six yeses and one absent. Thank you. Moving on to next item is Council Reports and Announcements. Are there any council reports and announcements? Actually, I have one report or one announcement. This Saturday at Southland Mall is the annual, I don't know what it's called this year. Is it like Mariachi Festival?
Mariachi Festival, number 13.
Number 13, but it's also like they're going to have Lucha Libre wrestlers. There's going to be music, there's going to be food and wrestling.
And taco eating contest.
And a taco eating contest. So, this Saturday at Southland Mall from, what is it, 3 to 12?
12 to 6.
12 to 6 p.m. And so, it's free and it's open, and it's open and available to everybody.
And after the event, you're going to be where?
Ooh. Where am I going to be?
Stone Break. Rosales Scholarship Presentation, this Rosales Gala?
No, no, that's a different event. That's, yeah, that's a different event.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay, okay. So, any other announcements or reports? Seeing none. Go on, there are no council referrals. And ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.